This is the Flint City Council meeting brought to you by the Flint City Council and presented by Spectacle Productions. Don't just watch TV, make it. And underwritten in part by the Flint Pipe Fitters Union, looking for pipe fitters apprentices throughout Flint.
Our pledge to the United States of America, in 230 colors like the which stands, one nation, under God, and individual with delivery speed and justice for all.
Reading of the disorderly persons city code subsection, and it reads, "Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section 31-10, disorderly conduct, assault and battery, and disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. Any person who presents, who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators shall be removed from the meeting."
This is the April 12th, City of Flint, special city council meeting.
The purpose of this meeting today is to allow this legislative body to continue discussing, to continue discussions regarding the city's medical marijuana facilities, proposed ordinances, including discussions of possible amendments to those particular ordinances.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Before we get into, enter into any dialogue, I would like to, first of all, see what, where Councilman Mays is going, and then after Councilman Mays, I would like to call up Assistant, Assistant City Attorney Reed Erickson and Kevin Scrofts to update us on where we are. And then please provide us with deadlines, information regarding deadlines. Councilman Mays?
Yeah, two things, Mr. President. One, when the meeting was posted, it, I think I seen a posting that had this particular agenda item, and it also, I think, was posted for additional council business.
Okay.
And so I want to make sure prior to the final comments, we have this agenda with additional council business in it.
Counsel. I ordered that so, sir. Because that's exactly, you're right, that's how it was posted.
That's how it was posted.
Right.
And so I wanted to do that, change to the agenda. And then also, you know, I can't speak for the other council people, but I'll proceed with that order, but I really want to get something done today on this. There's a list of amendments, and we've listened and listened and listened, and we haven't proposed and voted on amendments, and that's what I wanted to come here to do today.
Okay.
I don't know how long Mr. Erickson gonna take, but we do have a group of amendments that we need to try to see if we can vote on and pass rather than all the constant presentations. Thank you.
Gotcha, Councilman. Thank you, sir. Say, Council, uh, I started to say Councilman Reed Erickson, but you're not a councilman, you're an attorney.
That's correct, Mr. President.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. So springboarding off of Councilman Mays' comments, I will be very brief because he's absolutely correct that we are in what I would characterize as crunch time right now when it comes to this amendment, because it's the intention of the city to opt into this ordinance, and opt in into the Michigan Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act in a fashion that doesn't jeopardize the current provisioning centers that had already been licensed under the prior ordinance. Now, under the emergency rules for the state of Michigan, those facilities are allowed to operate on a temporary continuing basis until June 15th of this year. So that's what we do not want to run into where we've not finished our ordinance in a time that gives them the opportunity to apply to the state of Michigan for full licensure. In the event we don't do that, those facilities would have to close on a temporary basis, and, and then once our ordinance and licensure is completed, and they have their licenses granted by the state of Michigan, presumably they could reopen, but their temporary continuing status could be jeopardized by, by delay. And so that's not too dramatic about the matter, but those are, those are the facts and the timeline that we're facing. And there have been two amendments so far already, and I, and I would absolutely agree with Councilman Mays that if there are additional amendments, now is the perfect time to introduce them. But two amendments have been made already, and I'd just like to touch on those very briefly. The one is a very basic amendment, was done at our first hearing on the matter, and that's to change the minimum square footage for growing facilities from 10,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet. Those two changes can be found on pages three and 29, which are the two references for minimum size for grow facilities. The only change you'll see, that it says 5,000 square feet as the minimum size for the structure, as opposed to 10,000, it's as simple as that. A more substantive change at our last council meeting on the matter was the introduction of the merit review process, and I tried to hand out, when this was first introduced, copies of it in plain formatting, but also the language can be found in the current copies you have before you on page eight through page 10. And I'll go over that in broad strokes, but ultimately this body did vote to amend the ordinance to adopt a merit-based approach, and that was the entirety of the amendment. So staff started with Councilman Guerra, who was the bringer of the motion, to get some further clarification on, on at least what we thought was intended, and obviously if this body disagrees, then I'm happy to make any revisions that are, that are so desired. But very briefly, the merit review process has four subsections, the first subsection A for the application window, that there would be a 45-day period for any interested licensees to apply. Now, that really would only apply to the licenses that are subject to a cap, because in the event that there is no cap in place, then there's no need to have a merit review process for order, because any that meet the site's criteria would be eligible for licensure. So at the conclusion of that 45-day window, once the, if we exceed the cap, then we have to do the process. If, for example, safety compliance facilities and secure transport only have five licenses. If we only get three applications, we don't need to review the merits because they're all eligible. It's only if we have six applications, we need to determine which are the top five that would be best for the city. That's my interpretation of the merit approach. Subsection B would be blind review, which would be that the zoning coordinator would take the applications but not participate in the scoring process, and would in fact redact the applications so that we know the specifications of the proposed site, but not necessarily the applicants, so that we can have an arm's length review and, review it strictly on the objective merits, so that we can do our best to prevent any accusations of nepotism, or cronyism, or racism, classism, sexism, so on and so forth. The scoring panel, our proposition is that it's made up of staff, designee of the heads of legal, planning and zoning, police, fire, and building and safety inspection departments to score these based on a predetermined rubric of criteria, and that brings me to subsection D, the factors for scoring. So this proposed language says that we would actually return before this body with a finalized rubric for scoring and criteria that, under which these licenses would be reviewed. So the following criteria is included as a floor, the ordinance says these factors would definitely be included, and we could include additional factors as well, and that rubric would be subject to approval by this body. And then finally, subsection E, determination of order. So once the applications are scored, the individual applicants could be noted, would be notified of the order of their placement, those within the cap would proceed through the licensure process accordingly, those who do not complete the licensure process in six months would result in a constructive denial, the next best applicant would be afforded the opportunity to apply, and so on and so forth. The remaining, excuse me, the remaining applicants who were not within the cap would be treated as, as a waiting list, so that in the event that currently existing grandfathered facilities don't pass Michigan licensure, if any facilities are closed for administrative or court order, or failure to renew at the state level, or if the city chooses in the future to raise the cap, we would already have the list in place, so we're not doing the work twice. I've tried to keep it brief, but those are the two amendments that this body has done so far, and I'm of course happy to take any questions.
Councilwoman Fields?
Could you tell me which ones have caps?
Yes. So there are, there are three proposed caps of the five, five license types. The two that I don't think we will run into, because frankly, we haven't heard a lot of interest in, in these kinds of licenses are secure transport, and I now, I think of a Brinkstruck for moving marijuana between growers and provisioning centers, and potentially processes as well if they're off-site, and safety compliance facilities, which are meant to, I think, test for parasites as well as for safety, THC percentages, because of course, a bottle of beer is different from a bottle of whiskey, and you need to know which of the two you have in front of you.
What are the caps on those?
Those are five licenses apiece.
Okay, and would you go over the other?
The, the last one, subject to a cap, is provisioning centers. A common word for it is dispensary, but provisioning center is, is the technical term of art, and that's what we've used under our prior ordinance, and that would be 20. And we've had 13 under the prior ordinance, I believe a couple of received cease and desist orders from the state of Michigan, but we're seeing how that plays out, because that, I'm not sure if that's a miscommunication that has caused that or what, but I do anticipate that less than 13 will actually pass the state of Michigan's review, and then that would open up more slots within that 20 to, to open up for licensure. And one other thing, when it comes to those 20, is that we try to be very competitive, there's no urban city besides Lansing who's doing more, and their process has become very encumbered, and I would not advise that we take that approach, but they're doing 25, which, so we're pretty much on par with that when, when you adjust for population, so we are trying to be competitive. But at the same time, it's much easier for this body to raise the cap in the future in the event we find as, for administration and enforcement, that we can handle that licenses and add to it, versus getting the genie back in the bottle is, is much more difficult, which is why we've tried to be conservative, but also balance that with, with generating business.
And, but we don't have any caps on growing or processing?
Correct. They have license, they have strict site requirements, they have to be within a minimum of 5,000 square feet now for the grow, and 10,000 for the processing, and we anticipate most of those will be co-located, but that's not required. We do require both of those to be in industrial zoned districts as well, and as to growers, the state of Michigan requires that, we have no say over that. So, and of course, there are the distance requirements for schools, parks, and churches that apply as well. So they do have site requirements, but if you're willing to invest in the city for one of these licenses, and, and use our underindustrialized corridors, and meet the site specifics, we're glad to have you. That's the approach.
Do, do we have any idea how many physical sites actually currently meet the zoning requirements for growing and processing?
So very briefly, mapping went out, although I believe that was for the Group E, so that would include the provisioning, which are D5 and D6 as well, but I would, as far as a strict number, I don't know, but I would defer to Kevin for at least a generalized parcel number.
Mr. President, point of information.
What's your point? What's your point, Counsel?
I've requested that that type of map be presented to us a little while back.
Okay.
Hello, Counsel. So there was a map that was distributed at the last meeting that outlined, under the current, current draft that was presented to you, where those provisioning centers would be permitted. That was the request that, that we received. I think for a general, it's difficult to give you an exact number, because some of these are, some of these parcels, I guess the total number of parcels, some have buildings, some don't. I would say, under the current, I would estimate it's probably a couple hundred parcels that would be eligible. But some of those get taken offline, remember, when other uses come on, what, you know, other locational standards are then checked off under this, so it's difficult, but right now, a couple hundred I would estimate.
Because they have to follow different, like a decision tree, right? Who meets this, what's that? But, I mean, it is possible to make this industrial sites, and we were given a map of, of those sites, but there wasn't a number on them, I didn't.
There was not a number, no.
And, and I know it is possible, you know, someone could buy this site, and then buy the site next to it, combine them.
Correct.
So it's, it's variable, but you think, right now, there's maybe 100 industrial sites?
I would say a couple hundred.
Couple hundred, okay. An estimate.
An estimate, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, that map locates the industrial property, but it doesn't, in my opinion, narrow it down to the thousand feet, 500 feet that we might propose, so it's just a, it's just a generic map of the industrial sites, was my understanding.
No, so the map that was presented at the meeting is a spatial analysis that includes all the locational standards which were in the initial draft, so that's 1,000 feet, faith base, park, and, and.
So was Buick City on that map?
So the Buick City site, the main Buick City site was not orange, because it's within 300 feet of a residential, so that's why that was not indicated on that map.
The Buick City site is also within so many feet of a church, but anyway, which is anecdote. Anyway, Mr. President, that's one of the amendments that was being proposed. I talked to Mr. Erickson about it, he can elaborate on it, but when you got industrial properties such as Buick City, I proposed that if it's over five acres, you remember that discussion, Mr. Erickson, did you work on that? If it's over five acres, because you wouldn't want to knock out all that industrial land on property line to property line. Can you enlighten the council on that conversation about over five acres?
I'm happy to do so, Councilman. So yes, we, we did have that conversation, and that is an option for this, for this body. I don't have written copies, but to be frank, I think an oral motion, it's not like the merit review where there's a lot of nuance that I have to infer, I think a motion to amend, I could have in a written form exactly as this body desires by the next meeting, if, if it's the desire of this body to do that amendment. It's entirely possible for us to, because currently, the way that the zoning lines are measured is from parcel line to parcel line. It is within this body's authority to say for five acre parcels or larger, we could specify specifically for industrial, if so desired, it would be measured from the parcel line of the disqualifying property to the facility, which would then prevent large sites from being knocked out. I spoke to the city assessor very briefly on this as well, and parcels can also be split, and when it comes to usage of the land, it may be.
Mr. President, if I may, we specifically went over a formula for if it was more than five acres, and I thought you was taking notes, so if you saying by the next meeting, I guess we can sit out here and hammer that down, if it's over five acres, I'll circle back to that, but I wish you had a head those details and, and ready to roll, but that's okay, I guess, but that's what we'll talk about when an industrial site is over five acres. We also talked about a medical exemption for the applicant, if the applicant is a medical doctor. We also talked about an exemption, and those exemptions would allow for a medical applicant, a doctor with, who's applying as an applicant, to do a facility on an industrial site that would include grow, processing, and dispensary. Did you write or communicate that one down?
I do have a written copy of that.
Worded and then, beg your pardon?
Yes, I, I do, and first, allow me to apologize, Councilman, because I didn't have the takeaway that, but we could, the amendment for the, for the five parcels could be done very easily, and I don't think we would need to make amendment at a subsequent meeting. A vote on that would qualify. But to get to the question at hand, as far as the facility exemption.
So that's two amendments we've discussed so far, one for five acres or more, now two, we go into the medical exemption.
Correct. The medical research facility exemption that had been discussed previously between you and I, as well as brought up by Councilwoman Worthing, and at both your and her request, I've taken a look at sample language that we discussed and that she had provided, and I did actually, I do have a printed copy of proposed language, that if it's the will of this body to make such an exemption, that I think would work with the city to prevent at least abuse and creating loopholes.
Do you have copies for the council to look at?
I, I do, and I.
Do you have one copy?
No, I have a dozen copies. I, I provided them to Councilwoman Fields, because I initially thought she was going to bring Councilwoman Worthing's motion on her behalf today.
Can we look at that now?
I, I have no objection to that. Councilwoman Fields, may I pass those out?
Do you have a copy of that amendment? And then also, Mr., Mr. President, through you to the city attorney, we talked about another exemption, which was less than 1,000 feet for two categories. What is, what is required by federal law, 1,000 feet from a school? So church and park, we were discussing, what, 500 feet?
That's exactly right. It's been staff's proposal, and the old ordinance had 1,000 feet from parks and churches as well, but it is within this body's authority certainly to reduce it from 1,000 feet as to the provisioning centers from parks and, and from churches as well, but I would very strongly recommend that we remain at 1,000 feet for schools, so that we stay out of federal.
Yeah, we would remain 1,000 feet for schools, but that would be another amendment to the current ordinance, 500 feet churches and parks. Some municipalities have 200, 250 feet, I've noticed that. The circling back on the merit base, we discussed Highland Park and Lapea, how does this merit base compare to those ordinances? Did you get a chance to review them? What's the difference between this merit base? And then, once you answer that question, I want to ask the role the council would play in that overall process you described. I want to circle back on that.
Absolutely. So first, I'll compare that, because we're still in the drafting format, the proposal that you have in front of you has a rubric that's to be determined. So you look at the, you look at Lapea, and you look at Highland, uh, excuse me, Hazel Park, and they're doing a merit base process as well, and they're using a rubric that we would present to this body for this body's approval, for scoring purposes, for the measurement of, of the score, for the determination of order.
Explain what you mean by that, I'm hearing you, but.
Sure. So you'd have a scoring sheet with a number of factors, and an assigned value to those factors, and then.
So have those factors been determined other than the examples that I see here?
No, those would be brought back for approval from the final rubric before this council, and during this discussion would be an excellent time to raise factors that this body is interested in.
So this body would have the authority to reject or accept those factors?
That's exactly right.
Okay, so what's being proposed here is some staff people and departments would propose some factors, and then they would circle back to council, and we would look at those factors and adopt them or turn them down?
That's exactly right.
Okay, so then after council looks at those factors and adopts them and turn them down, and after they score, then the, according, in, in this merit-based system, does that final product come to council for any up or down vote?
It, it does not, Councilman, and that's where we do get into a difference between Hazel Park and Lapea, and I'll just touch on that very briefly, if that's acceptable. So Hazel Park actually does have the review process go before the city council, they have it go to the plan, the planning commission first for site review, and then once all those are granted, then for light, final step in licensure, they do the merit hearing before the city council. But what, what I think, because the way it works for them, that I do not think would work for us, is because they are only doing four licenses total, and we are talking about 20 provisioning center licenses alone, so I, and I think that would slow the process down significantly. And the other difference for Lapea, they have a three-member panel that their city council is appointing, but they're, it's not made up of necessarily of the council.
But what I would say to you, Mr. Erickson, Attorney Erickson, that I'm, I'm interested in those two models versus this model. This is a new ordinance, it's, it's big, and so when I see all the various department and staff, and I want to stay close to this as a council, I'm going to ask that we interject some type of panel and/or final review with council similar to Hazel Park and Lapea. So I, I like what I see here, but that's a little tidbit that I would ask be in this ordinance as well. And so, you know, you, you, you say they got three license, we got 20, 13 of them grandfather clause in, seven of them might be new, that's all the reason, you know? I think we can handle seven, we can handle 20. It's just a wheel of what we need to do to stay close to this process. I'm not ready to just turn it over to department heads and others, so I would ask that that council aspect be in that merit-based system.
Understood. So just one point that I'd like to clarify is that we would not be reviewing only the seven, we would review all of the applications.
All 20.
Well, as many as come in, so.
We putting a cap on 20 as it relates to the dispensary.
That's true, yes.
So you saying the merit base would also go for the transport, security, and grow?
Not for the grow. So what, what I'm saying is, if you have 45 people who want a provisioning center license, even though we only have 20 licenses, to do the merit base to make sure, because the intention of this body was to make sure the best aren't left out, we have to review all of those 45, and then rank them so that the top 20 are the best 20.
And that's okay, because the staff would do a lot of that work, and by the time it's weeded out from staff and others, and selections has been recommended to this council, I think we can read at home and look at stuff too. So that's, I mean, it's somebody gonna do it, and then finally, it'll be a decision made based upon that merit-based approach.
So I'm just trying to reconcile, Councilman, where.
It could be 50, it could be 60, it could be 23, I understand that.
Right, right, no, so what, what I'm, I'm not understanding, and I'm not trying to be obtuse here, is where, where the, the line for staff review ends, do we do the top half of the staff scores, go to the council, or how, how does that parse out? That's, that's just what I'm asking.
This is, this is what I'm looking at. You gonna bring some factors for us, if we approve this ordinance, then that, you gonna circle back with some factors that we would have to look at, correct?
That's correct.
So once you circle back with them factors, then we'll approve and do and deal with those factors. Then after that, when the staff does their review or whatever, the final would come to council?
So we would bring the completed scores to the council to review?
And the ones you left out.
Right, so, understood.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, you said that you've got a model when it comes to Hazel Park and/or Lapea with a different flavor of that.
That's correct.
So it's, it can be done?
Yeah, oh, yes, it can, legally.
I'm interested in that.
Understood.
Yeah, because I'm looking at all them departments that you got listed, and there's something council is missing, so I'm very interested in that. Because you said yourself, we can change and amend at any time.
That, that's absolutely true.
But in this infant stages, I'm interested in that.
Understood.
Okay, and then I would yield now, I seen Mr. Guerrero, and then I'll finish with the proposed amendments, because I'm hoping we can go bam, 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 and, you know, depending on what have to go back and writing, and what we can do from the floor, I want to amend this if we can, and then adopt it at some point.
Thank you, Counsel.
I would yield to Mr. Guerrero.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Guerra?
Yeah, that, um, just to clarify, are we going to do the amendments after we're done with this discussion?
No, once we're done with this discussion, we're going to do public speaking, and then we're going to go into.
Into the possible amendments on that?
Yeah, unless, unless this body wishes to change that, so whatever, whatever the body's pleasure is.
That's fine, I was just wondering, just to make sure, and then also, I want to touch on the merit system, is that I really like the way it's proposed in this one. I know we proposed it last week, and I met with the planning and development and the legal department, I'm looking at this blind review system, and I think the way that I, the reason that I liked it the way it is without getting council involved, is because it makes these decisions non-political at all, also that way that the, the staff knows what they're doing, they're looking at these blindly, so they don't know who they are, and then we don't have to have political type votes where it's making us do these votes where we can have potential people asking us about questions and stuff like that. It should be done with staff review. That's just my opinion, I don't know what the council believes in, but I just wanted to touch on that subject while I was talking, while we were talking about it.
That's a good opinion, sir.
Mr. President.
Councilman, we got, we got, would you yield also to?
Well, I would, before I yield, I would just say to Mr. Guerra, if, if it ain't political with them doing a blind number, why would it be political with us? We looking at employees, size, investment, to me, that's mechanical more so than political, and so I kind of respectfully disagree. I would yield to.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Fields?
Yes, I have some questions about the number of dispensaries that exist now in the city. I've only heard the number that are estimated in the 7th ward, which the last number I heard were 17, so I'm looking at this cap. How many do we currently have in the city of Flint?
Kevin's standing to answer that question.
So to date, 14 special regulated use dispensary licenses have been issued. 14, two did not open within a year. To date. Sorry. To date, 14 special regulated use dispensary licenses have been issued within the city.
Okay.
Two did not open within a year. Per chapter 50 of zoning code, you lose your, you lose your status if you don't open within a year. So 12 have been, 12 actually legally are operating, and to Reed's point earlier, five have been issued cease and desist letters by the Michigan. five have been issued cease and desist letters by the Michigan State Police, and Laura, I don't know how many of those are still operating or opening, but twelve should be opening.
Okay, well then my follow-up question, so I don't know where the seventeen came, maybe that was part of the five cease and desist, but anyway, what I want to know is, of those twelve then, that already have a license, okay, do you contemplate that of those twelve, some of them won't meet the new ordinance requirements and will have to close and/or move their facilities, and so what's that number?
So that, that number is difficult to put, to put a final number on. I think the major difference, remember, is you must be approved both locally and at the state. Currently, you do not have to be approved at the state. So Reed, as Reed mentioned earlier, we do not anticipate all twelve of those will get approval from the state. We could be wrong, but, but just based on what we're seeing thus far with the state board not really issuing any licenses to date, we, we don't think it'll be twelve.
Okay, so, so then my next question is, we don't know of the twelve, okay, that legally are operating around the city now, how many of those, you know, are in the right zone position, or, you know, you, I don't know if you can estimate how many will not follow through. I'm trying to figure out, if we're capping this at twenty, you know, are we talking about this, this economic development opportunity for only an additional eight businesses? In addition, you know, will those twelve be grandfathered in first, or?
So the way it's, what we're proposing, and this is based off past discussions with this body, ever, all twelve, or if they obtain their state license, they would get grandfathered in. If they, if they get their state license, they would be grandfathered in. Keep in mind, though, that that is just a cap on dispensaries. There's the five different use types, so there's other uses that we currently do not permit that under the MMFA ordinance we would be able to permit.
Okay, and when you say, just to be sure, for clarification, when you say grandfathered in, it doesn't mean the cap of twenty plus those twelve, it means a total of twenty dispensaries around the city?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. President?
Councilman?
And when you say grandfathered in, some of them could be maybe in D two and D three, so they'll be grandfathered in in that zoning, and we're gonna limit in provision and centers to D five and D six in this proposed ordinance. That would be a fair statement.
D five, D six, EF and G.
EF and G is what?
EF and G districts are, are industrial and manuf, like heavy industrial and industrial districts.
Right, so that would be, they would be grandfathered in if they're already in a D two, D three, or whatever, no new ones could come into that, and we would limit the opportunity for the ones that's applying now in D five and D six, and I'm okay with that. We had some discussion whether or not processing should be in D five, D six, or just the industrial. What does this ordinance do for processing?
So this ordinance proposes that it only be permitted in the industrial, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Councilman, because just yesterday Laura released an advisory bulletin specifying that if, when it comes to the gases that are pressurized and used for the processing, manufacturing, for the creation of the oils to the processing process, that if they do not meet certain criteria that they put out on the bulletin, Laura will not even inspect them. And I bring that up because I do think the processing portion, not necessarily the baking, taking the, which is also processing, taking that oil and baking it, that's obviously just making brownies, so to speak, but the actual extraction process of the oil, we do think is industrial and, and belongs in those EF and G and co-located potentially with the growing facilities.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll maybe circle back on that, I ain't tripping off of that. Also, when it comes to the five thousand square foot amendment that we made, the five thousand square feet, that amendment was for provisional centers.
No, that was for growing, Councilman.
That was for growing, and that was, we had three different categories of grow, correct?
The state has three different grow licenses.
Three different categories.
Yes.
So, the one category that we amended was ten thousand, we amended it to five thousand.
And that's for all grow licenses?
All grow license, so all, all, down all three categories, we've amended that to five thousand.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so the thirty thousand square foot mandate in the ordinance would have been, if you have a grow, a dispensary, and a processing center, is it grow and dispensary or grow dispensary and processing? What is the thirty thousand square foot mandate?
The, the trigger-
And I'm, I'm asking that because I want to see if it can be smaller. Go ahead.
Sure, so the triggering event for that is the combination of provisioning with either processing or growing, and we anticipate both. Those are already allowed to be together without a minimum square footage increase. It's the addition of the dispensing, the provisioning onsite, that we have done the proposed thirty thousand square foot minimum, and the ration-
Well, we lowered to grow already for all three.
That's correct.
But we haven't circled back on that thirty thousand, now that we've lowered that from ten thousand. So, so, so the way that I'm looking at that, if we've now amended that to five thousand, is it fair to keep that at thirty thousand?
Well, Councilman, I, I, I would propose that it's fair, because the rationale we have is we want to limit these uses that we do see as inherently separate. When one is a retail use, well, you'll have your medical marijuana patients and customers coming in and out throughout the day to, of course, get their, their medical product, and then the other two, the growing and the processing, are strictly employees only. No member of the public needs to or should be there at any time of day or night. However, we have recognized that individuals want to make large investments in the city, and they want to buy potentially a large parcel and buy all three licenses, and that's a significant amount of revenue. So in order to create a carrot for that without necessarily exacerbating the problem that we see with two different traffic type uses, is having a minimum square footage requirement to say, well, if you're going to have a very large facility, thirty thousand square feet in the city, then, then we think it is worth taking on that additional two uses, having them together to reward that kind of investment.
Let me say this, some people thought Einstein was crazy, but Einstein turned out to be a genius. So if I got a doctor who got five thousand square feet for grow, that's adequate, and he had five thousand or less square foot for a processing and/or dispensary, I ain't up to thirty thousand. And so I don't want to take a doctor out of the mix who might could do something in ten thousand or fifteen thousand square feet, just because we want money at thirty thousand. So, I, 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 I'm looking at amending that thirty thousand, that's what I'm thinking.
I, I understand that.
Because we've amended the ten thousand to five thousand.
We have.
What do you think an average square foot for a dispensary would be in a D five or D six?
I, I don't think the dispensary footprint would be very large, I think we're talking about the grow and the processing.
That's correct. So the processing would be about what, in your opinion? Bigger than the grow? I think not.
Not necessarily.
Right, so if the grow is the biggest, and we've amended that to five thousand, now that don't keep nobody from coming in here applying in a merit-based system with ten thousand, thirty thousand, or fifty thousand. We would look at it based upon that, but I can't see myself requiring thirty thousand square feet when we done already reduced that down to five, and the only driving force is large investment.
Well, yeah-
Give me another driving force to keep it there, 'cause I heard large investment. You got another one?
Understood. And in fact, this was also the rationale for the ten thousand square foot minimum for the other two uses as well, and our intention was to balance two interests. We didn't want to cap investment in the city when it comes to these growing and processing licenses, but at the same time, we do have to deal with limited administrative resources, particularly when it comes to police enforcement. So the idea being, we would not put a cap on these licenses, but we would at least try to keep them of such a size that it incentivizes them to co-locate together, because you can have multiple licenses on one parcel.
It ain't making sense to me, Attorney Erickson, because if you only gonna give out so many, the police know them twenty locations, the grow, the grow, which is unlimited, now, we can't put a cap on grow, because the state issues that license, or can we put a cap on grow?
We, we can put a cap on grow.
Okay, but y'all didn't recommend a cap on grow. So if you got possible two hundred industrial sites, maybe we do want to amend it and put a cap on it, because I'm not gonna buy that we just want them big so we can police them.
Understood.
You know, you can police them by putting a cap on them if you need it to. So I'm listening to all the logic that, that's coming to me from the planning, the zoning, the legal, and every time I hear the logic that I'm trying to be sold on, that ain't what I'm here for. I ain't here to be sold, because my brain work good too. If you can put a cap on dispensaries, you can put a cap on processing and transport, you can put a cap, now, safe security and transport, that's where you got a cap, but now it sound like we could put a cap on grow if we wanted to. And that's why I want this stuff to stay before the council, because that ain't never been discussed before. So now that don't mean I want to put a cap, but don't sell me on policing it, because if you wanted to police it, you would have put a cap on it. If you want two hundred of them, you ain't concerned really about policing, so you want two hundred big ones rather than forty small ones. That ain't making sense to me. Mr. President, as I think about this, I would yield the floor, because I want to knock these amendments out, and Mr. Erickson, you know, I'm ready to adopt and pass an ordinance, but I'm talking about it, because we can adopt it and amend it as we go. But I just want to hear the whole discussion, don't try to sell me on nothing, 'cause I'm gonna pick up on it every time.
Understood. Councilwoman Fields?
Okay, I actually would like to see a cap on growing too, and is it possible to do a cap on processing, just grow?
No, it's entirely within this body's authority.
Okay, and I'll tell you why. The reason why I would encourage a cap is, we all know that industrial sites are becoming, it's kind of at a premium, as industry is picking up in Detroit area and south of us, and I don't want Flint to just become, you know, we, one of our sources of troubles here was we became a one-horse GM town, that's all we did. And then when that industry went south, you know, it was devastating. So I think we need to leave more sites available for other types of industry to come in, and there, there is interest, there is growing interest. So, I actually would like to see a growing and processing cap, and I'd like some recommendations for what people think is reasonable, because, you know, we don't have to take every industrial site we have available and just commit it to marijuana. I think that's a really bad idea, that's a really fuzzy idea. And then I have a couple other questions. One is, do we no longer have a personal property tax for businesses?
Off the top of my head, Councilwoman, I, I can't give a-
We do have a personal property tax.
Okay, so, the reason I'm asking this is, when you were talking about the processing, the machinery, or whatever it's going to take to process this, normally, that would be something that would be taxed. They're obligated to report they have this personal property, these businesses, and we tax it. But my question is, are the marijuana plants themselves going to be considered personal property, and what's the worth of the single marijuana plant?
So that's an interesting question, I, I don't have an answer for you as to whether that would count as personal property for tax purposes sitting here. I believe the, the worth of a plant probably varies, but I'm sure it's in, in the thousands of dollars.
Well, I think we should investigate that, because, you know, that could be additional revenue to the city, definitely.
So, the state, the state has tied our hands when it comes to specific marijuana taxation. So we, we are entitled to twenty-five percent of the excise tax that's collected at the state level, and three percent in addition to the sales tax, and we are, we are allowed to have fees that we can justify for site review and inspection and so forth.
But we need to check?
I, I would have to circle back on whether we could do that.
Yeah, on personal property, both the machinery and equipment they need to process, and then the plants themselves, that's the question. And then, I also want to ask, because I missed portions of a couple meetings, one of the things I'm concerned about is the extra need for police presence or whatever, you know, we don't really know what that might be yet, but have we talked about adding something to this that all of these three main categories would be required to have their own security personnel?
May I just say, if we, in the ordinance says it is a requirement? There's a, I, I just, I just read it just a few days ago, there's a requirement for-
Do you have a page that's on?
Let me see, there is a requirement.
Yeah, is it just?
I think it's just security cameras that require-
No, it's more, no, it's, it's more detailed than that. I, I read, and I have to go back, I got it written up, but there is, there, there are requirements that they must have security cameras, but also it, the, it goes into that those facilities must have security guards on duty while business operations are, are, during business hours, and there's some other things in there. So I know that-
Well, I'd like to make sure of that, because, and like, growing, you know, that's twenty-four hour growing, I'd like to make sure about that, because, you know, take, for example, we had someone here speak to the fact that they were interested in the Stevens Moving and Storage, which is now in the fifth ward, actually, it used to be in the fourth, and that's like, I don't know how many stories that building is, many stories, I'm not quite sure the street it's on, but, you know, I can't imagine not having security personnel onsite.
Page fourteen.
Page fourteen?
Mr. President?
Councilman Griggs?
Right now, the police presence is, is okay with what we have. I can't see that, what would this be, a ten percent increase is going to demand a whole lot more police presence. And also, if I could ask Mr. Scroantz, what's the total number of industrial sites we have in Flint?
He said around, he said around two hundred.
Two hundred? Well, I can't see us having two hundred marijuana sites.
If I may to clarify, that's, the, the question from Councilwoman Fields was the number of industrial sites that would be eligible, I believe, under the draft. If your question is the total number of industrial sites within the city, I, I don't have a number on that. I, I don't know offhand, I can, we could query that.
Okay, well, see, Mrs. Fields was saying that she was afraid that some of these medical marijuana sites might take up all our sites, and I can't, I can't fathom how that would happen, not if we've got at least two hundred. I don't know. I can't see us growing.
Mr. Chair, I wasn't quite finished.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's worse.
You gave the floor to Mr. Griggs.
I'm sorry, so then, I'm taking it back from him, and I'm giving it back to you. Go right ahead.
Any problem with that, Mr. Griggs?
What, now, say it again?
She didn't say, she didn't say anything.
Didn't say anything? Go ahead. No, I'm done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, as I read this quickly, it says that there are many either-or security measures, not limited to lighting, alarms, barriers, recording, monitoring devices, and/or security guard proposed for the facility, and it says, the plan must contain specifications, and then the marijuana facility, and I assume when you say facility, you're referencing all three types of facilities, must have a security guard present during business hours or alternative security procedures. I, I believe that that is an amendment that needs to be changed, must have a security guard present at all times. Personally, I'd like, I would like to-
Understood, Councilwoman. If, if I could very briefly address that, because that is something that actually, Councilman Mays, when, when we were discussing the amendments that he referenced earlier, one of the suggestions, and I, and it is not in the ordinance for the rubric as, as far as required, but I can assure this body that I, I think it's such a good idea that, that I could almost certainly say that it would be in the rubric, that we would grant points favorable to applicants who commit to having round-the-clock security, similar to the private security, for instance, at Kettering University, because we can't require them to pay more for police presence, but we can reward them for at least providing security and being less of a burden on police resources.
But you're not going to have a rubric for the, is, is all, all three activities going to be merit-based?
Not as it stands now, that's correct.
So, which, which of the three will be merit-based? So, which of the three will be merit-based?
Provisioning and potentially, but I don't think it's likely if we have more than the cap of five for the testing and the secure transport. That would be merit-based as well.
Okay, so we'd actually need a cap on growing and processing in order to make that merit-based as well?
In order to trigger the rubric as it sits, that's correct. We could make an amendment also without a cap, it is flexible, but yes, that would be a way to implement that.
Can, can you see, and/or, Kevin, please, can you see any downside to putting a cap on growing and processing? Why haven't you offered that as an alternative now?
So, that is absolutely an alternative. The intention was simply to balance the potential for large, large investment. I mean, to be frank, I don't anticipate medical marijuana provisioning centers to be the size of Meyer when it comes to the provisioning. However, it's entirely possible that a grow facility could be very large and really utilize the industrial corridors and get some investment on parcels where the city's not collecting revenue. So it was really just an intention to balance the limited administrative resources that we have when it comes to enforcement, but without potentially leaving large investment off the table, so to speak. So it was simply an attempt at a balancing act. But it is entirely within this body's authority to do a cap. The only con that I would see to a cap as we sit here now for growing and processing would mean that we almost certainly triple the merit review because now we are reviewing grow and processing as well.
Well, I still think, you know, it's really important to, you know, there is a medical need out here for this, and there are reasons why we've all talked about opting in, but at the same time, you know, I don't think we should opt in to the exclusion of other economic development opportunities. And if we don't put caps on these, I don't want to see all of our industrial sites snapped up, as has happened in other communities around the country. All the industrial sites, okay, were snapped up for marijuana. And I'd like us to see other industries come in.
Then, I'd like to offer this, then maybe that's something that this body then could do in creating an ordinance that would prohibit what it is your, you know...
It puts a cap on it.
Yeah. Well, it doesn't even have to be a cap in this, but it could be just a standalone ordinance that specifies that how our industrial areas could be used.
Mr. President.
Well, that's...
I got you, I'm coming to you, Councilman. Go ahead.
I can see where you're going with that, but since we're dealing with this now, one of the easiest ways to do it was, would be to put a number.
You don't have an argument for me?
Mr. President.
Hold on, hold on, just a second. Councilman Mays, then I'm coming to you, Councilman Griggs.
Okay, just as a caveat to that, and that's how I'm hoping this conversation flow when we hop on a subject matter, try to knock it out so we can be ready to make amendments. But one of the people who had been texting me, emailing, communicating, it's a group, they said, one way of doing it, they refer to this ordinance, 1-801-51 subsection C6, 1-801-51 subsection C6, that the language could be the City of Flint through its city council has the regulatory right to limit the number of locations and number of provisioning centers permitted under this ordinance.
Point of information, Mr. Mays, what page is that? I'm sorry, I'd like to follow this.
Oh, I don't know what page it's on, I'm just given a subsection of one of the opportunities that they say this language that would be in bold black print could maybe fall up under. So it's they saying the section might be C, subsection C, subsection 6. So maybe, can you answer that? But this language would be, if I may continue, the City of Flint through its city council has the regulatory right to limit the number of locations and the number of provisioning centers permitted under this ordinance, and has the right to revise this limit from time to time by City of Flint City Council Resolution. And so if that language was put in there, they think it might keep us from having to do second reading, first reading, and that type of thing, some specific language. Now, through you to the city attorney, if you following that, then you could give feedback.
I do follow you, Councilman. And so where section C6 would go would be on page 10. You won't see a 6 on page 10 because 6 would be a new subsection under subsection C. So you'll see the 5 there, and that would be, and then there's a subsection Roman numeral I under 5, and then that's, and section C, you move on to D. So that's where in the ordinance that C6 would be placed. My caution to that approach only would be that it could place the city in a precarious, not totally irreversible, but a precarious situation where if we have more licenses granted and the city chooses to move back later, and this is a concern that I think has come up before, can we opt out? And the short answer is wholesale opt-out, I think, would be relatively simple. We would simply not renew the ordinance and give facilities notice that their licenses would not be renewed because the city's not re-opting in. Getting to where we want to reduce the number of licenses is possible, but I think the way that we could do that without risking legal liability would be to have the ordinance strictly enforced, which of course, we intend to anyway, but any violations whatsoever, we would hold against licensees and not renew their licenses, and that would be, and then simultaneously reduce or create a cap. But in the event that we're simply not renewing, and we don't have that kind of nuisance violation criteria to support us, I think it may be difficult for us to choose which licenses we renew and which ones we don't. Not to say that it's impossible, but I do think it puts us in a more difficult situations. Much easier to add licenses than subtract without getting rid of all of them.
Okay, well, I just wanted to add that in. I think that as I listen to the public speak on this, the 30,000 square foot, I don't know if we've settled on anything yet, but you know people can come in with 50,000. I think I was contacted by somebody from Wild Beals, who I think they said in some city they was doing maybe, I don't want to say it wrong, but they might have said 320,000 square feet grow, and they going to have dispensaries around the state of Michigan, a $20 million investment. So if we gave the smaller opportunity for a smaller business person, if they, if they got it based upon merit, fine. But if a bigger one came in and scored, and they got it, fine. So I don't think that limiting that 30,000 feet and winding that down hurts somebody who want to do 100,000 square feet. I just don't see the logic where it does. If you see it, tell me, because I'm not buying the logic of the police aspect. I think we've talked about that, if we want to do a limit on growth. I don't know if I, I don't know where I want to go on the limit on growth, because if we did put a limit, you know, and I seen it doing something, I might come back and amend that limit. And I don't know if I would want my limit on grows to be 30, 40, or 50, or 100, I don't know. But I do think I know that I want that 30,000 to be shrunk down to maybe 10,000. Because the grow is the largest at 5,000. And if you're going to do a provisioning center and processing on the same site, I don't want to jump from 5,000 to 30,000, Reed. I'll listen to you when we get to that actual amendment and see what you think. Now, this exemption, the exemption that I'm looking at, if I had to do a medical exemption for a doctor that's actually an applicant, I've seen the things that could happen with some of them catchwords, but this exemption might be if the doctor is the actual applicant, and if they are doing a grow, a processing, and a provisioning center, all on the same site. If they are doing all three of them, and the doctor's an applicant, I think I can go with that exemption. And would that exemption exempt them from the residential buffer and the others, or they would still conform with the others? What's your thoughts on that?
Councilman, the version that was distributed by Councilwoman Fields earlier does have the requirement, like you stated, that for this medical research facility exemption, you would have to be a Michigan licensed physician. It does not require that you have all three licenses together, but it does require you to be a minimum 20,000 square foot facility. That's feedback that we got on this exemption. I would respectfully submit that if this body is looking at reducing the 30,000 square foot co-location requirement, for the reasons I said earlier, I wouldn't necessarily endorse that, not that you necessarily need me to do so. But in the event that this body was looking to reduce it, I think 20,000 square feet as this medical location would require, would be a comparable number then for that as well. But it does require them to be an actual Michigan licensed physician for this locational requirement for medical research.
Where would the other parts of the ordinance come into play? If they got that exemption, would they still, of course, would have to conform to the 1,000 feet regulation? They would also, what, have to conform to the residential buffer and/or if we amended 500 feet? All of those would come into play? The exemption, don't knock all that out. What are you thinking there?
The original exemption that was discussed previously actually did abolish all of those. The proposal that I have in front of you simply excludes it from the 300-foot residential requirement and applies 500 feet to parks and churches and 1,000 from schools nonetheless.
And so, that's the proposal we have in front of us.
Yes.
So if we, if we vote on that amendment, then that would be, it would include the 500 feet even before we amend it, and it would also take away the 300 residential buffer.
It would be a locational exemption for this kind of definition, yes.
Okay. I might move on that one. Mr. President, I'm going to need a little time, I'll listen to the public, and then I'll be ready to get down to business and make some amendments.
Thank you. Councilman Griggs?
Mr. President. It seems that we have a cap already of 20 places, sites, and we've got 12. I don't think we need to concern ourselves with us getting too many sites. This is, this is starting to remind me of the little-town mentality, that's very resistance to anything new coming to town. I had that same problem four years ago when I started a new type of business, and I met with 100% resistance from this city. It was terrible. And I feel sorry for any of these people trying to start a new business in this town. I think we need to find out who is the busiest of these dispensaries, and when somebody can identify that, then the concerned council people go sit in their car and watch those businesses, and see what kind of security is really required. I think the only security that's going to be required is keeping people from robbing them because they're dealing on cash only. The police need to be there to protect the businesses. We don't need protection from the clients. I haven't heard bad things about the clients, other than anti-pot people. And we really need to know what that busiest one is. I hope you can tell us who it is. And these concerned council people, I'll do it myself, will go sit out there in their parking lot for a few hours and see what all this crime is about. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, Council. Councilwoman Fields?
First, to reply to Mr. Griggs, I've never been concerned about the clients being the criminal element. I am concerned about the businesses and the need for police presence because it's going to be a lot of cash, okay? And the product itself is worth a lot of money. So that's where my concern comes from. I'm not concerned about the clients being the criminal element, Mr. Griggs. I hope you heard me, okay? But I also wanted to get back to, because we've kind of jumped from this to that to that, but one more time. I have asked our planner, Mr. Schrontz, to work with our attorney, Mr. Erickson, on coming up with a recommended cap for a number for both growing and processing. And once again, I just want to repeat, you know, if we take up, or are we allowed to be taking up all of our industrial sites for just those businesses? You have to think about, yeah, there will be jobs there, but these jobs will be limited to probably slightly over minimum wage, minimum wage and over, and maybe a couple jobs at a higher management level. But when you have businesses that come in, like Lear Corporation, okay, that has, they have much more depth in terms of what they do and the need for employees that have, you know, it's very different. And so, I just don't want to have, you know, and I ask everybody to ask themselves, you know, do you want your kids and grandkids to have the only jobs available to them because they're the only industries in town, because they've taken up the only sites for industry in town? Is their only option here in Flint is to go to work for a marijuana grower at 15 an hour? Or do you want to see some other industries come in where there's potential growth and modernization and looking at all kinds of different things? So I think capping the number of these centers is extremely important to me personally, anyway.
Okay. Any other council persons?
This is the April 12, City of Flint, special city council meeting.
Okay, our first public speaker is Mr. R.L. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell?
Good evening, Council, Mr. President. My name is R.L. Mitchell. I design at 759 East London Avenue, over on North Side, with Grace Line Cemetery. I can actually see the cemetery from my backyard, where my auntie was buried. I can actually see her grave from my backyard, and my mama's grave from, she just passed away about eight months... Anyway, I'm going to get back to the situation like Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Garrick, talk like, putting a cap on this situation, marijuana situation, before we can get, it's crunch time, Mr. President. Notice, look around. It started from one of your specific neighborhood, Ms. Galloway. You know that she, she ain't here. When it's time to crunch time, but we still going to get it done tonight. And 5th Ward was here, but, and another thing, this 7th Ward, what's the value to you, to the city attorney, what's the value of a student, Mr. City Attorney? When I was in that ward, I was transferred to, from Woodya School to McKinley School, and we had to have the police exports to get us in there. Now I'm wondering if they put a cap on it, because they never did rebuild Woodya and Central, still standing there. And like you, Mr. President, talking about, trying to come up with an idea to keep from capping stuff, talking about is it possible to keep the police, the police automatically going to kick in and do their job to protect African-American going in the white neighborhood? That's what I see. What's the value of a student, Mr. City Attorney? Put a cap on a black student? That's what it's all about. And another thing, it been about 40 years, and it still ain't got the situation fixed yet. Every time we get ready to put crunch time on this situation, you and Ms. Worthing and that guy over there with the gray beard, come talking about what's the use of having police to protect it? But she was right, saying nobody don't mess with them people buying their medicine. What she had, she leaked, she never, and all that junk, dude always coming up with some excuse to filibuster around before we never get to the point. And you up there talking about industrial city, and about these churches, there's three churches in this city, and the other, and, and the other church I got in Christ, Selby Street, and, but St. George's Mathew. There's 24-inch stream general moles, I wonder if general moles brought them out to have, but they still got the land, and talking about this... about this dude up there, you let him go first and came and get a straight answer out of it. Man, and Mr. President, you know, you would know it's crunch time, dude. Take that.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Rhina Griffl. Mrs. Griffl?
Mrs. Griffl?
She's gone. Okay. Pastor Alan Gilbert?
Pastor Gilbert?
He's gone too. Uh, Mrs. Joy Palladino?
Mrs. Palladino?
Oh, Tony, I'm sorry, Mr. Tony, Mr. Tony Palladino.
I feel good yesterday. It's Joy. Tony Palladino.
Thank you.
You call me Joy, don't happen much. Mr. Mitchell's right, it's crunch time. I think you need to pass some of this, but more importantly, like Eric and them say, we gotta go through this a little bit. And I know the value of a plant. You got junk weed and you got some primo stuff. You know what I'm saying? You ain't gonna get a dime bag. You guys understand, maybe I'm thinking the wrong way. And I know a potent brownie because I've ate them, you know, too much. I don't eat them a lot, but I've had them, I don't like them. And Leah Smoke, she's got a card, and without that card, we'd probably been divorced 20 years ago. So you need to look at, at camp, why do you need a cap? And why are you worried about the industry? We haven't had nobody come in here industrial-wise in 40 years. I say if they want the property, come get it. Now is the time. They got us all tore up so they can come get this stuff. That's why we don't have golf courses. That's why we don't have service. They got all this stuff depleted and tore up so they can come in and get it for really, really cheap rates. Question, are you gonna keep them taxed? Are you gonna freeze them? You gonna forgive them? You gonna do like they did the Flint Journal on us? Ooh, let's build this journal for 37 million. Let's give them a tax break for 8 million and then fire them all. Are you gonna do that? Are you gonna put that burden of them towers on us? See, I've been here a long time too. You gonna come into my neighborhood, finally? You guys gonna come into my neighborhood and fix it up? You just put 50 million in housing. What are you guys doing to the residents? I keep saying that. I got another one here, Kevin. Is this gonna absorb that stupid-ass street ice tax? They gonna take that off us? Because they're gonna be using a lot of power for that. Is this the reason why the KWA was formed so we can get that raw water? We told you it was coming. It was either raw water for plants or slaughtered animals. And let's just get it straight. The property of all them houses sat on on the east side, that's not toxic. The stuff along the river is. You ain't fooling us. So I think if you bring something in there, you need to let that get back into the neighborhoods. And I also want to say something. I stood here the other night, and I said, you guys need to get on this bus. Thank you, Eric, and thank you, you little hustler. I ran with this guy around there. Yeah, I know, but it's Santino to me. I know his family, but the thing is, I know some of you guys can't make it. The 25th were getting on the buses again. We tore them up yesterday. They walked out on us. They didn't listen to us. It felt so familiar. You understand what I'm saying? It felt so familiar. Now, I think you need to pass this, but on top of this, give us another chance to come in and speak about what you're doing and what we can do. I would love to go in there sweep up weed. You know, I would love to have a job driving a little fork, look around, and let's be realistic. Marijuana also makes bricks. There's other things besides pot. You can build houses out of that. Serious, so you want industry? Let's put some housing back together. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
The 25th, please, let's get on the buses or come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Palladino.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk?
The next speaker is Mr. Keith Olson.
Mr. Olson?
Hi. My name's Keith Olson. I run criminalized racketeering against patients. I'm a cannabis manufacturer and extraction artist. I'm here today to talk about the ordinances. Michigan's attacked the community for a decade under the MMMA. Now we got the MMFLA, the Facilities License and Act, and nobody's doing anything for us patients. It's all for the money. It's all for the corporate interests. You know, our patient's been attacked for a decade. Countless families have been destroyed under the drug war, many of our own. And thankfully, Flint and Genesee County really hasn't gone along with the Michigan program on this medical marijuana stuff. You know, now Flint wants a piece of the action, a piece of the pie under the MMFLA, and that's fine. That's great. Patients need safe access. But these ordinances don't do much for the ill and dying patients. Like I said, we need safe access and we need the MMMA. There's been a lot of things talked about here that I disapprove of, doctors' exemptions for ones. Our whole act has been messed up by doctors. We get recommendations. We don't get prescriptions. There's doctors in this state that have written 80% of the recommendations illegally. There's a majority of the doctors writing prescriptions right now are suspended. So if we want a doctor to have a licensed doctor, I would recommend you put in there not a suspended licensed doctor, which is what signs most of our recommendations. I'm against the Michigan seed-to-sale laws. I believe they're just trying to make a price fixing their own commodity, keeping the community out of this. Some of the best cannabis in Michigan is grown in Genesee County and Flint right here by guys like me. There's no reason for us to not be able to participate. Right now, the state will tell you that the provisionary centers don't have their grows. They're supposed to buy it from the caregivers, but they're not. They're growing it themselves, they're important, and the caregivers are cut out. You know, Flint and Genesee County could set up an auction house, a clearinghouse, to purchase this cannabis from the community and let that go into the provisionary centers and that, and it would help everybody out across the board. I propose an amendment as well for the auction house. I think you guys should put an amendment on there for an auction house so we can all be a part of this, so everybody can get a piece of the pie. The application scoring systems have been attacked under civil court. Just this week in Arkansas, they launched a bunch of lawsuits. All these scoring systems, all the applicant things, that's all subject to lawsuits. Y'all can get sued over all that stuff. Mr. Mays is correct. The square foot requirements are just ridiculous. A processing center could operate in 20-foot by 40-foot. We don't need 10,000 square feet. And I would also like to say that I think you guys are making a good idea to get a citizens' board to look through the applications, find suitable ones, put them together, up to you guys, so you don't have to sit and waste six months of council meetings. And I nominate myself, Keith Olson, to help you. Hit me an email at KeithLOlson, K.E.I.T.H.L.O.L.S.O.N., at gmail dot com, and I'll be happy to help you all out.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Ron DeCiccio.
Mr. DeCiccio.
Thank you for hearing me. I've spoke before you many, many times as an adjunct to the last speaker. I feel that it is a form of economic discrimination to have a 5,000-square-foot grow on a 500 plant. The only thing that's mandated fees by the state is a 500-plant grow at $10,000. All other licenses through the state are $46,000 now. So if you stack three licenses in one location, you're looking at a fee, an annual fee of almost $150,000. And to my point, we are better off diversifying our base for industry by encouraging smaller businesses. As a licensed plumber, electrician, and third-generation builder, I understand Mr. Erickson's need for huge providers. However, I can tell you, you're cutting out two-thirds of the people that want to be in this industry. So I would encourage you to revitalize existing industrial space, lower the space required for a 500-plant grow, because that's only $10,000 from the state, to maybe 2,000 or 2,500. To his point, he's correct. You don't need 30,000 square feet for processing. You need 20 by 20, 20 by 40. Dispensaries, maybe 1,000 square feet. What we see now in Colorado is all these massive grows that are indoor are now closing because it is becoming so competitive, because there's a flood to market, prices are dropping. So if I can grow outdoors in a greenhouse for $400 a pound as opposed to indoors under artificial lights for 600, all these huge industrial grows now are starting to close. They're opting for sophisticated greenhouses and even outdoor growing. So I don't want to see Flint in a situation three or five years from now where we have all these massive industrial grows that are closing because people are moving out to the country where they can build a greenhouse and they can produce cannabis at 20, 30, 40, 50% less. But my point, the most important point here, is there's so much industrial property that's small, that three or four people could go in on and produce jobs for the local economy. And more importantly, to his point, there is a difference in cannabis. Smaller growers are much more prone and likely to deliver a superior project, product, rather. These huge industrial grows like you see in Pinconning and Bangor, where they have 29 stacked licenses for one provider and 39 stacked licenses, they're interested in volume, volume, volume. There's a huge percentage of people that use this that appreciate quality product. And you're gonna get that from smaller growers. So I would truly recommend on the Class A licenses, reducing the minimum square foot because rather than, because just like GM, they can be out of here tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. DeCiccio.
Our last speaker is Mr. Arthur Woodson. Mr. Woodson?
This is probably the first time that I don't even use my full three minutes. Security, I heard Ms. Fields speaking about security. Let's not wait until the last minute to go over to Genesee County and do a MOU with them. I hear that we gonna, you know, everybody's saying, let's use all this industrial and everything else. Schwartz Creek, Davidson, Flushing, Flint Township, they're not gonna, they probably won't even open up one, you know, dispensary, whatever the case may be. But at the same time, Genesee County gets 30%. All we get is what, 1%? And they get money for security, for the police. Why not do a MOU? Because we're gonna put all the money in there. What do they need to guard Schwartz Creek and all these other places, and they're not putting any money in? They're not, I mean, why should they even be out there? So we need to do a MOU with Genesee County and say, hey, listen, we're contributing the majority of the funds, so your, our resources need to be here in the city of Flint. Do that before doing anything else, because what I have noticed is if you don't have it in writing, they tend to not honor words anymore. Then, Mr. Eric, is there any way that we can go back and pardon all the people who have been convicted of marijuana? Can you go in there and do that? The ones that have been convicted of a misdemeanor, then you go talk to Mr. Layton and see if you can do it for the county, then all y'all go down to the state and get them out from the state. Because John Boehner now, he was way against it at first, but now all of a sudden, it's a big business, he's on the board, one of the biggest one now. It's a lot of money in this. I read yesterday that Colorado made enough money to fund the educational system out there. It's a lot of money in this. What we need to do after everything is done, I know we can't do it right now, but after everything is done, we need to go down to the state and force them to change these laws to where the municipalities can make the money. Because right now, as it stands, the state gets all the money. They are really pimping us for real. They got us doing all the work while they sit back and take all the money. And this should be benefiting Flint instead of benefiting the legislators up there, because it's gonna be just like that responsibility fee where they was taking all the money and we never knew where it went. So we really need to address these issues after, because I see that y'all are really working and Ms. Williams and everyone is really working with y'all on this and trying to get it right. So thank you. But really check on that MOU and talk to the county so that we don't have to use our resources from us putting all the money in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Madam Clerk, we don't have any more speakers?
No, that's, that was the conclusion of the speakers.
Okay. That brings us to our ordinances.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Fields?
I just have a bit of a special request, because we've been talking about these medical research facilities, but it doesn't talk about what they're researching. So I would ask for a bit of a special privilege to let one of the doctors who's involved in marijuana medical research come up and spend a few minutes to tell us what that research consists of.
Dr. Nakada, please.
And then we get our 10 minutes of comment, too.
How many?
Two, sorry. Two. Yeah, I did say 10, but two.
Hello, Council. Thanks for having me speak. So to kind of discuss just about research and what we're actually doing, currently we're focused on pain management. That's really the, what brought me here to Flint and why I kind of started doing this work here. We're working on ways to dose cannabis and apply it in a practical medical sense. So, you know, when it comes to using marijuana, we're not about smoking it in joints and eating brownies. It's not really what kind of we do on the medicine side. So we need to isolate different compounds. We need to see what works, where it works, how it works. We have a lot of information that is available to us, and now the next step is taking that further. We plan on using different technologies and processing methods to isolate the specific cannabinoid compounds and further studying them and seeing what medical uses they will have and how they work. That's gonna be the basis of the research that we want to conduct. Currently, we're already participating with the University of Michigan and actively recruiting patients for a pain management study currently. I'm not sure if you need more detail about exactly what we're doing, I can, but if you have some questions.
Mention the opioid option.
Yes. So, yes, that's, obviously, that's one of the main issues right now is the opioid crisis. You know, there's a big push to decrease opioid use, and those mandates are even coming as far as Medicare at this point. They're actually looking at limiting the amount of opiates that can be prescribed at any one given time. And that's gonna produce a separate issue in the medical field, because as we reduce the number of narcotics, there's gonna be people who would draw, the people who are dependent currently, and we need different ways and options on how to manage that. Cannabis is being looked at in multiple ways to be used in that field. A lot of the research is going that way. The Journal of American Medical Association, JAMA, just recently published an article stating that cannabis should be one of the primary options as used for opioid management and pain management.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, I would move some amendments. I'd like to make a motion that we amend some things. Now, my question to the council is, do they want to go one by one or just read them all? One by one? Okay.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I would like us to have our two minutes of comment after public speaking.
Okay.
Per our rules.
We will get that, but let's answer the council's question. We will get our two minutes, but what's the council's pleasure?
One by one.
One by one, or you're gonna?
One by one. One by one.
One by one.
Okay, all right. So then we'll start with Councilman Griggs. Councilman Griggs, this is where we've got two minutes. We're gonna respond to our public speakers. You're starting.
To Mr. Woodson, when he was talking about us not getting a very big piece of the pie, the only way we can get more money into Flint for the medical marijuana is to fight with the state. We're stuck with how much, we're such a small percentage that we're gonna gain from the income from this.
You're right, sir. You're doing a lot of money here.
Our fight for more money is with the state. It's not within the city. We're getting a very small amount of money from the state, but that's my comment to Mr. Woodson. He said that we need more money, and I totally agree. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Winfrey Carter? Councilwoman Fields?
I'd like to respond to a couple things. You know, the more I hear about this medical research facility, I really think it is important because, you know, I personally am one of those people. You know, I'm old, I have a lot of things that hurt, and I've had some very mild opiates in the past with good reason, and now they're cutting them off. And I have a lot of friends and neighbors and even colleagues, I think, that, you know, this is going to be a problem because the pain exists and how do you deal with it? So I think the research aspect is
So I think the research aspect is really, really important, the more I think about it, especially since our legislature has gone way, you know, swung the pendulum way over the other side about the ability to get any type of even mild pain reliever. So I think that's important. And the other thing, to Mr. Woodson, I absolutely agree with him, you know, one, we need to talk to the state legislators, because I don't even understand why the counties are getting thirty percent at all. As far as I can tell, they're not doing anything. And, you know, and so the city of Flint, who now has the responsibility for all the, the staffing and the activities and the police and whatever, so, you know, we could do an MOU, they may not want to, okay, but we have no hammer if we don't have our legislators responding to. And I'd actually like a response from somebody, I don't know if Mr. Erickson knows, but why the heck, why the heck were the counties given thirty percent to begin with?
I'm very sorry, Councilwoman. If you could repeat the question for me?
Wake up. Why are the counties getting thirty percent in the state legislation? What's the rationale?
Frankly, that's a question for the, for the state legislature, because that was determined when the MMFLA was passed, that was long before it even, even got to our desks. But that's set by the state, we have no say in that.
Have, Mr. Erickson, have we attempted to talk with the county, like the Sheriff's Department, et cetera, to see what we're gonna get for their thirty percent? Have we talked to anybody at the county?
I, I don't believe, now, one thing that I, that I would point out, it's only in the Judiciary Committee. There is a bill to give communities who are not receiving the direct police services from the county to receive the county's, county sheriff's share, because they're, but that's only in committee, I can't say that that will pass, but it is at least a discussion that's being had at the state level.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Garrett?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond, I think that that's what Mr. Woodson was talking about, with working with state legislators and getting some more things, more productive for the local government body. Definitely something I think we should be working on. And then also to Tony about dealing with the taxes and the abatements and freezes, I do have an amendment here, it's all written up, and I'm gonna propose that a little bit for you.
Councilman Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Only thing I would like to say in regards to the medical marijuana situation, I don't like the idea of economic discrimination, because it should be inclusive of whoever running a professional establishment, they should, if they wanna be part of the growth of this new industrial, since we just opting in, it shouldn't be so high that whoever want to be in business cannot afford to be in business, whether it be the three hundred foot, I mean, three thousand foot to five thousand distance. After all, we're talking about medical marijuana, not recreational. And as well as the medical research facilities. Medical research facilities should be considered as such. When I spoke with Mr. Nakadah, it was on, like I said, before, pills or whatever, to enhance a person's life, to make them feel better. That's for research. But it should be exemptions inside of that, as well as exemptions inside of the, the growth or the dispensaries inside a certain zoning, to where we make it more inclusive of the residents. After all, we want economic development. That's what I'm thinking in Genesee County, especially Flint. But we wanna consider that we don't leave people out, and it's good that we're going with the merit-based system as well, so that just the big boys can only play this game. It's got to be inclusive of the residents. And I, I'm just kinda lost, because we're talking medical marijuana. Why is it such a concern, unless it's a side to it, people really don't wanna respond to, of, of such a hard zoning ordinance, which this is not supposed to be for people that just get high and, and be just drugged out, should not be. But I think it should be treated as such for medical conditions, people that really need this medication, that's what I'm looking at. And I'm saying we should be inclusive without discriminating, making it the shelf so high that nobody participates in a professional manner that wanna run an establishment or business. I'm done.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Councilman Mays?
Yeah, I would just say, all of the people who's been watching, I hope that you'll continue as we shape and continue to amend these ordinances. I appreciate the input from you today, and I think we're gonna make some amendments here. Thanks.
Okay. What is the council's pleasure with ordinance number 1-801-51.1?
Mr. President?
Councilman Mays?
Yeah. I would first like to make an amendment as it relates to the square footage for the licensing. You've got three categories of license.
What's your page citation, Councilman?
Beg your pardon?
What's your pa, what page are you on?
I refer to Attorney Erickson for that. What I'm gonna propose is about two thousand square foot for license, what is that, A class? Why do you want me to refer to them? Class A, B, and C, or 1, 2, 3?
A, B, and C are the, are the three sub-license types for grows, Councilman.
Okay. So for a Class A license, I would propose two thousand square feet. For a Class B license, I would propose five thousand square feet. And for a Class C license, I would propose, um, hmm, eight thousand square feet.
Point of information.
Minimum. Now, it could be more, but those are the minimum proposed requirements.
You don't wanna go into discussion? Okay. What's your, what's your point, Councilwoman Fields?
I'm just trying to follow this, so as we go down these, each of these ordinances, could you, could someone please refer us to the page, so I can follow which?
Yeah, Attorney Erickson.
Section this is.
And if I may finish that motion on square footage, when she gets her point of information.
Okay.
So as to square feet, Councilwoman Fields, for the grow facilities, there's two references for that. The first is on page three, and the, the second is on page twenty-nine. And one other thing that I would point out is you'll only see one number, five thousand, because we've just treated the grows together, we've not, we've not differentiated between an A, B, and C class of grow license, which the state does.
Okay, so, once again, point of information. So what we've been given is what has been recommended so far, and just to be clear, Mr. Mays is recommending a different amount than what is in the written ordinance so far?
Yeah. Our ordinance just does not break it down into the A, B, C, and classes issued from the state.
Councilwoman Fields, let's let Councilman Mays finish his motion, so that we can get it into discussion. Your point of order has been addressed, so we need to get the whole, get your, your, your motion, your complete motion, Councilman, so we can get it discussed.
I'll, I'll start over. I'll move that the Class A license have a minimum square footage of two thousand. The Class B license has a minimum square footage of five thousand. And the Class C license have a minimum square footage of eight thousand. And the thirty thousand square footage that we referenced, I would put that square footage down to, that's the one that has the more, the combination. I would put that square footage down to nine thousand.
Nine?
Nine.
Okay.
And that would be the move, that would be the motion I would make as to these square footage.
Okay.
Point, point of information.
What's your point, Council?
Well, he's quoting these values, but he doesn't say instead of.
I'm sorry? Wait a minute. Talking to the mic, I can't hear you, sir.
Point of, point of order.
What's your point?
What if you got a point of information? Okay, I'm sorry.
It, it's, he's saying like two thousand instead of. I mean, I don't know what these instead of's are, because I can't find.
It's not an instead of, Councilman, it's, it's a change. He wants to change it.
Well, I'm only changing five thousand to two thousand, but I don't know what the other changes are from, too.
Can I, can I, can I say this, sir? Can we, can we get to that late, you, you move, so you wanna know what the number we're moving it from or to?
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.
That'll be in the discussion.
Right.
If we get there.
Yeah. Okay. Can we do that? All right. Proceed.
That's the motion.
You're done. Okay, it's, is there a second for that motion? It's been moved and seconded, now we get into the discussion.
Mr. President?
Councilman Mays?
Through you two, Mr. Griggs and to the council, the state issues three different licenses, a Class A, a Class B, and a Class C. The Class A, I think you grow about five hundred plants. The Class C, I think you can grow, what, fifteen hundred? So the more plants you grow, the higher the price you pay for a state license. And so what I wanted to do for the little guy, I wanted to shrink that to two thousand for the Class A. I wanted to go for the Class B at five thousand, and then for the Class C at eight thousand, minimum. Now, they can come in and propose more square footage, because we gonna judge them on a merit-based system. If we decide that somebody coming in, instead of two thousand, and they propose, they coming in at ten thousand, we'll look at that. They might beat the two thousand out, but these are minimum requirements on square footage, knowing that they could come in, in their proposal with more square footage. But I think based upon what they'll actually be doing in these facilities, then that would be the right square footage. Through you to the city attorney, these square footages, as I'm proposing them, do you look at that as square footage for what, provisional centers, grows, processing, do we have to?
Councilman, as I understand it, this is strictly for the grow? That's what this amendment is about?
Yeah, 'cause we didn't have square footage for the provisional centers at all.
That's correct.
They can come in with whatever they propose.
That's correct.
So this is particularly relating to the grow, and then the nine thousand is particularly relating to the grow that houses processing and/or provisional, a combination thereof, that's what the thirty thousand was.
Yes.
Right. So that would be the motion. I, I hope it's understood, or if people wanna talk about it more.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes, I do wanna talk about it more, 'cause you just confused me. At one time, I thought we were talking on page three about the minimum of square feet that's required for a grow center, and then you made something about, you said something about the number of plants. We're not talking about number of plants, right? We're just talking about num, minimum square feet for the facility.
If I may. The license is issued from the state based upon the number of plants you will grow in that facility. And I think Attorney Erickson and others can tell you that it's anywhere from five hundred in the Class A to the, Mr. Erickson?
Yes, I would first like, I have other questions, but I would first like to know the number of plants allowed in A, B, and C.
A, B, and C.
Yes, A, so a Class A license allows for up to five hundred plants, a Class B license allows for up to one thousand plants, and a Class C license allows for up to fifteen hundred plants. So for instance, at, at Class C, eight thousand square feet, I think that works out to about five square feet per plant, which is about, what, two and a quarter by two and a quarter? It's, that's pretty tight space, but.
It's on, it's on page seven of the ordinance, Mr.
Yeah, I don't want, you know, we're for cage-free plants, okay?
So point of information, that's, is that the only one you concerned about is the Class C?
I, I just was just, out of a curiosity, more than anything, just doing a little math here, I had, I just haven't divided it by the others.
You ain't saying you're concerned about that?
No, it's just a matter of fact.
Okay, I, I have two additional questions.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
One, I, I'm not understanding where the thirty thousand square feet thing is coming in. How, how is this relevant to, to the size, minimum size for a facility for growing?
So the thirty thousand square foot requirement is really used as a tool, because the approach in drafting this ordinance and before bringing it to this body, was that as a matter of planning, growing facilities and processing are strictly employees only. There's no need for the public to be there, period, and they're off in the industrial areas, and they, as a general rule, probably don't want to attract a lot of attention. Provisioning centers, of course, require patients to be there on a daily basis or near daily, to, to keep the business alive, of course. And so our rationale was that those, those two uses were separate and should be kept separate. Through the discussions, we did have feedback from the community that we didn't wanna cut off people who wanted to make a large investment in the city. So what we tried to do is balance those two competing factors and create a carrot, if you will, that if you wanna make a large investment, that you're that committed to the city of Flint, then we will in effect suspend the concern we had with those two uses and allow them to be together. The analogy that I think fits well for Flint is, of course, that you don't typically build cars on the site, that you sell them. You, you have a dealership and you have a manufacturing facility, and that's been our approach with, that was our original approach with marijuana as well. But to encourage and incentivize these large parcel investments, we did say, well, if you're gonna do a large investment, then you will get the benefit of what's ordinarily otherwise prohibited, and that's having a one-stop shop.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question is, we've said that the state has certain requirements for the licenses, right? I want to know how, including proof of a certain level of assets available, so, in order to get a license, correct? So I wanna know how the state's requirements would affect if we made changes in this, from five thousand down to two, five, and eight? I mean, would those be compatible, comparable? You know, I mean, would you have, it's like, are you gonna have to prove you've got half a million dollars in order to open up a hot dog stand?
That analogy, I think, is relatively accurate, actually, because for Class C, you need a half a million dollars in unencumbered assets, one quarter of which have to be proven liquid, and the other have to be unencumbered, so you can't have a mortgage on real property to show that, that net worth, to get one Class C license from the state. So to be frank, lowering the square footage requirement on our end doesn't realistically lower the economic barrier that the state has already put in place.
Okay, so, I want to address Councilman Davis's comment about, you know.
Mays? Or Davis?
Davis.
Oh.
About, you know, the kind of economic justice and being able to provide opportunities for the small business person, right? Instead of setting it at a barrier that only the large businessmen. So if we lower these, I don't see how this is actually going to assist the small business person, because the state's requirement, the first of all, you have to have a certain financial backing or assets. So I, I don't really see, and maybe somebody can explain it to me, how reducing these minimum square foot requirements will actually help the small businessman.
Mr. President?
Councilman Mays?
Through you to Ms. Fields, the legislation in place is the legislation in place. If the state is requiring that type of demonstration of asset, liquid, and/or unencumbered assets, that's what they require, and somebody's gonna have to demonstrate that. And if they can't demonstrate that, they won't get the state license, and then they'll never make it to us. So the state law is the state law. But if they demonstrate that, then they can do a two thousand, they can do a ten thousand, they could do a eight thousand, or they could do a fifty thousand square foot. Those things are totally separate as to what they have to demonstrate to the state, and so the small business person is knocked out of the state, but I don't wanna hit him a double dose. This is just to do with the square footage as it relates to us and what we think is necessary for these particular operations.
Councilwoman?
I appreciate that explanation, but it still doesn't answer my question about why, if, if we're talking why, if, if we're trying to consider the small business person, okay, by, um, making more facility sites available to them because there are more facilities that meet a lower minimum square footage, okay, like, um, you know, a, a 2,000 square foot building, right? That that could be considered. I just don't see economically how small businessmen, um, or someone who actually has that money is going to, um... If they have to have a certain level of assets, okay, in, in order to get this license, it doesn't make sense to me that they would want to open up a 2,000 square foot facility because the requirement for the assets are so great, that businessman is going to go to a larger facility.
Point of information.
What's your point, Councilman?
All the requirements for the different class of licenses is not the same.
That's really not a point of information, but, um...
Do you, do you understand that?
No.
That'll make it a point of information.
Um, to me, this, once again, is interfering with the site that we want diversity in our businesses and diversity in our industries in this city. We don't want to take up every dang building in the city that from 2,000 square feet on, okay, to be, make it possible for them to do marijuana facilities. We need to have these, which were recommended by both planning and our legal department, okay, as a more reasonable gauge. It makes more sense to me to have a growing facility, the requirement be 5,000 square feet because, um, the requirement by the state to have a certain level of asset for that, that makes more sense to me. I don't see what we would accomplish by lowering the minimum square feet requirement.
Mr. President.
Councilman Mays.
Well, it makes sense to me, and my position is this, you've got 5,000 square foot, feet in Class B. You even got more than 5,000 square feet in Class C. The only one that's lower than 5,000 cla, um, square foot is Class A. So, um, 5,000, you getting it in two spots and then in one spot, you getting two. The point is this, Mr. Erickson, can you go over the requirements to the state for each class of license and the cost?
Yes, I can. So first, let me preface with all these numbers have the, what I discussed before as far as 25% liquid assets and then all of it unencumbered. So this applies to all of it, so I don't say it five times. Um, so growing, there are three licensed subclasses. There's Class A, which requires $150,000 in assets. Class B requires $300,000 in assets. And then the Class C, the 1,500, requires a half a million dollars in assets. Processors, the...
Repeat the last one.
Half a million for Class C, 500,000. Processing centers also require $300,000 in assets for a license. Secure, and then secure transporters and safety compliance each require 200,000. And then last, your provisioning centers also require $300,000 in assets. And that's the state requirement.
And so, Mr. President, some people, you know, might call some of those small business owners. You know, it ain't, it ain't multi-billion dollar, million dollar corporations. Some people do classify those thresholds as small business owners, $150,000 versus a half a billion, 500,000. So I'm clear that some of these people I still consider small business owners. And so I'm saying that for Ms. Fields because you can't change the state requirement for small business owners in this case. And so now if the state is putting that burden on a small business owner...
This is the April 12th, City of Flint special, City Council.
It's the same way when we, um, put bids out for contracts. There are certain bonds that's required for small business owners to get work with the city. Some people say those bonds price people out, but they're there. So this is the same type of thing. Until the state reps and the senators and others change those type of state requirements, my job is to try to help in any way I can. Now, if we're gonna do a merit-based system, which I think we gonna have the votes to do a merit-based system, then all of this stuff will be checked and double-checked. And if you want a person with a Class A license to have more than 2,000 or 5,000 or 10,000 feet square footage, you'll be able to do that, Ms. Fields, when we look at the qualifications for merit-based. You might give points for more square footage. So I hope that you really understand, um, the state gives credit for assets, so if you, um, own the building, you can show it on a balance sheet as well as if you own your grow equipment. Also, you have two to 10 people on applications to get the asset numbers met. So you might have a situation where a building can be used if it's unencumbered, that's what you said.
For 75% of the assets.
For the asset. And so whatever building a person got, if it's more than 2,000 feet, they can use it. But if they had a building at 3,000 feet, they still can use it. If they have a building at 10,000 square feet, they still can use it. But if that 2,000 square foot building helps them, then God bless them. They can always have more. These are the minimum requirements and they can have more. So I'm satisfied with that proposed amendment for 2,000, 5,000, 8,000, and then totally 9,000. And I don't have to say or more, those are just the minimum. They can have more.
And Councilman, just to help, 'cause, 'cause Councilman Griggs asked a question a few minutes ago. Now, I don't, I don't need to speak for you, you do it well for yourself, but, but just putting it in layman terms, so what you're proposing actually makes the playing field a bit more level for those who may not have the wherewithal, the, the big folks. Would that be safe to say?
In, in my mind, and they still could adequately grow.
Okay. Councilwoman?
I disagree. I don't see how it levels the playing field at all.
No.
Because the state is setting...
I'm not, I, I got you.
Okay.
I got you.
All right, it doesn't, it doesn't do that.
Okay.
We can control the state.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Griggs?
If this chambers right here is 2,000 square feet, I don't think it is, it's probably closer to 1,500, uh, and you plant these plants two foot apart, spacing, I'm assuming, I don't know if anybody here knows what the spacing is, this thing will hold a lot of plants, uh, probably 10,000 right here in this room. If you did, if, if you did two foot by two foot spacing, uh, I don't even know if anybody's got, where they came up with these square footages, but they're there and, and maybe it's something that can be fine-tuned later.
Mr. President.
Councilman?
Through you to the gentleman who raised his hand, it might be more. And if it helps, Mr. Griggs, this gentleman, when you ask the question, is it anybody in the room who noticed spacing on these plants? I would ask that if he can shed any light on that, if it helps you that he be allowed to do that.
Mr. Ne, Mr. Olson?
Yes, sir, Keith Olson.
Please.
We've been cultivating cannabis since the beginning of time. There's millions of ways to cultivate cannabis. Everybody does it differently. And Michigan, the 72 plants, the caregiver system, all of that makes the caregivers grow larger plants. Around here, I'll usually grow four plants under 1,000 watt light, four foot by four foot. And that's a larger plant. In California, where the drug laws are a little bit more friendly, I can grow any amount of plants I want. I can grow 100 plants on a four foot by eight foot table. A clone, a rooted clone, I mean, you can have 40 of them a square foot. Now, a full grown outdoor mature plant is not really the, the way that we would grow indoors. Most of the plants in California coming out of industrial markets are grown in two gallon pots. You know, maybe two, three, four ounces a piece off of them, out of, you know, maybe two foot by two foot.
So, Mr. President, through you to Mr. Olson, in your opinion, for whatever it's worth, if you had a 500 plant license and you had 2,000 square feet, would you think that would be adequate?
I know guys that have 500 plants in their basement, I'm playing.
And it's not 2,000 square foot, so 2,000 square foot would be adequate?
Absolutely.
And if you needed more, you could, you could come with three, 4,000, just, that's what I wanted to hear.
Generally, when we use indoor lighting, a high-pressure light will cover approximately a four foot by four foot area. That's 1,000 watt light, you get maybe a pound and a quarter, pound and a half off of it.
You've answered my question, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you all for being open to all this, I appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Hearing non-mutant clerk will call.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Gara?
No.
Ms. Fields?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, two no.
Okay. What is the council's pleasure?
Uh, Ms...
Thank you.
Ms, Mr. President.
Councilman Mays?
I would like to make another amendment to the ordinance as it relates to 500 feet, um, away from a church or park. I would amend that from 1,000 to 500 in the ordinance. That would be the motion I would make.
Is there second, is there support for that motion?
Our support?
It's been moved and properly supported.
Could he restate the motion in terms of the location, the 500 feet from where?
Yeah, Mr. Erickson can designate where it's at, but in the ordinance, um, right now, you have 1,000 feet away from a church, school, or park. By law, we must keep it in place at 1,000 from a school, so I'm making an amendment to 500 feet as it relates to the church and park.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Griggs. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Fields?
I'm going to say with all of these amendments that are coming up, I have a point of view, okay? And, and this is what my point of view is going to be. Yes, I support medical marijuana, but in the city of Flint, there is no necessity for uber-ultra maximizing opportunities for medical marijuana facilities in this city. I think what has been recommended by both our zoning staff and our legal staff is adequate. So I, I get you, and I never thought of myself as a conservative, but on this issue, I'm a conservative, okay? I don't think the city of Flint needs to be known as, you know, the Weed City, USA, Tree City, USA, yes, but not Weed City, USA. So I'm not going to support any amendment that is going to try to, um, wipe out every opportunity for some reasonable distance from people who don't want to be next to marijuana facilities, don't want to be close to growing, you know, they, they preserve their right to have, uh, no interaction with these facilities. So whatever these amendments that are coming up, I'll tell you right now, I'm going to be voting on anything that maximizes marijuana facilities in the city.
That's your privilege. Councilman Gara?
Yeah, on this, uh, change, I have been against it from the very beginning on changing that from 1,000 feet to 500 feet. I, I personally do not like the idea of having many places located next to parks due to many reasons, uh, and, uh, I'm not going to be supporting this. And I too have been called the conservative one on council because of my views on this. I do support medical marijuana, and in essence, I might even support recreational marijuana. Um, but, uh, with this ordinance, changing that policy is not one thing I agree with.
Okay. Councilman Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be supporting this because I really feel that you go down to at least 300 feet. Once again, I'm back at the, the point of, of my thoughts of being medical marijuana, not a drug house. If a doctor office could be there, a drug store could be there, a facility could be there. Now, if a neighbor didn't want it in their neighborhood, it should not be in that neighborhood. You should petition before you just go in a neighborhood like the 7th Ward did last week. If you don't want it in your neighborhood, it do not belong in there. But these facilities are medical facilities. And I'm done.
Mr. President.
Uh, Councilman Mays?
And when it get to the 300-foot residential buffer, I look at that as where we can add some in where residents can do just like they do liquor stores and others or, and you know, they might can come forward to object. I've talked to Ms. Williams about that. But as far as the 500 feet, I'm gonna be supporting it as well. Um, when I hear Ms. Fields say that she won't support certain amendments, I'm gonna see which amendment she do support. I think somebody mentioned something about the medical exemption. And so it's way more to these amendments than to say I'm not gonna support them. And so, Ms. Fields, it's been a lot of work. And even though zoning and planning and legal has did their job, now it's our turn to do our job. We have to gather information and then the buck stops here and we have to do. If you're gonna support an amendment, I think I heard you say, on the merit base, then if somebody come 2,000 feet away and you want to give them points, give them points. We're making the minimum standard of 500 feet, and if you want to give points and merit for somebody that's 4,000 feet away, put it in the merit base when we get there. So that's how you do that. If you want to structure points for people that's 4,000 feet away from a church or school or whatever and they sitting over there isolated by, um, Curzly Lake or something and it ain't nowhere around, then put that in the merit base. But what we dealing with is zoning now, so I'm trying to caution you, when we make amendments, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater because you probably, I can't speak for what you'll do, but if I see you support the merit-based amendment and you don't understand that you can give points for things that exceeds the minimum, then I think you missing the point on the merit. And then I'll see if you vote for any amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fields?
Yes, first of all, I don't care.
Wait, hold on just a second. You've, you've had your, so I'll come back to you. Council, Councilman Griggs, wait.
Okay, in a normal city, I believe it's 10 blocks in a mile, so that means each block is probably 500, 520 feet, 28 feet long. So that means stay a block away from a church, which could be difficult because in Flint, I've noticed you can have three churches in one block. I think a block is good enough. To change it from two blocks to one block, to me, is good enough. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fields?
Okay. I just want to say, I haven't heard anything yet, um, what that evaluation chart will look like or who will create the criteria for the merit-based chart and how it will be weighted. So that really hasn't been answered. I don't know that, uh, council does or doesn't have a part in that process. Uh, so first of all, I have a question. Is that stipulated anywhere?
Well, let me just say this, I think that's what, that's, that was discussion that Councilman Mays was having earlier, is that he didn't want the council out of the loop, that he wanted us included in the loop. And I'm, I'm, I'm supposing that he meant in creating that merit-based, uh, document.
Okay, Mr. Erickson.
But now, but now you may want to do a point of information and let him chime in.
No.
That's what I heard.
Okay, okay. Mr. Erickson, did you want to comment on that?
Yes, so the, the draft that you have before you now as to the merit-based, uh, a rubric which would determine these factors and their weight would be presented to the council for approval before it was used.
Okay, well, um, but I- Well, um, but I want to say about that merit-based, um, that final document may or may not turn out to be something that, um, allows for control of this particular issue, uh, but I do know if the ordinance is strong, okay, then the merit-based has to be, um, based on the ordinance, okay? So, I would rather have a strong ordinance and not leave it to chance that the merit-based, uh, rubric, okay, will take care of that problem. And, and I quite frankly, um, uh, Mr. Mays, I don't really care what your opinion is on how I vote on these issues, so, thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Mays?
Uh, I'm, I'm hurt that you don't care what my opinion is, but I'm gonna still try to communicate to you and all council people. Earlier, we discussed the merit base, and the merit base is part of the ordinance. So, if you want to make the ordinance strong, make the merit-based criteria and point-scoring aspect strong. So, when you try to separate the merit base from the, um, ordinance, and we're gonna put that in the ordinance, and that's gonna determine, hopefully with our input, continued input, I'm not just ready to turn it over, then I would ask you to care what I say. I'm hurt if you don't. I care what you and everybody else say, but my position is the merit base will be part of the ordinance, and so I just wanted you to know that's still part of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mays, and then, uh, go ahead.
You know, I'm gonna support the 500 feet. Now, when I look at, we have liquor stores on every corner. Some liquor stores are across the street from schools, which means that they are right across the street from parks, okay? So, when I look at a medical marijuana facility, and I'm thinking, medical marijuana is not the same as recreational marijuana. I mean, come on. We gotta think about the people and, and the people, you know, what they need, and particularly, particularly those people who, who need the medical marijuana. I mean, 500 feet? What's the difference? 1,000 feet, 500 feet? I mean, you got, you got, there's 300 feet. I think the state allows 300 feet for, um, parks or, or schools or whatever to be from, um, stores that sell liquor. Come on, what, I mean, you know, what's the difference?
Councilwoman Fields?
Ms. Winfrey Carter, I understand your point, but we're, we're coming at it from a slightly different perspective. For me, just because our zoning laws and ordinances regarding liquor stores are bad doesn't mean that we should follow that example in adopting more bad ordinances regarding, um, marijuana facilities. Um, I think we should revisit our zoning, um, requirements under liquor license, because I agree, there are far too many in this city. Um, but that also is a complex issue because I hear the state kind of overrides us. But, um, just because one is bad isn't justification to adopt another one that's not good.
But, um, President, can I say something?
Councilwoman?
Please. Um, Councilwoman, um, Fields, we're talking about medical marijuana. We're not talking about recreational marijuana. So, there's a big difference there. Medical marijuana, to help people, to help people who have different elements that need to be on medical marijuana. I mean, I would much rather see our people on a, a, a natural herb as opposed to opiates. We're talking about medical marijuana.
Point of information?
What's your point, Councilwoman?
Okay, I would like to inquire of, uh, Attorney Erickson. Uh, I don't know if there's any way to determine this because maybe those records are closed, but how many people in the city of Flint have medical marijuana cards?
Oh, my goodness.
Therefore, what would the need be for the number of marijuana facilities in the city of Flint? Because what I think is going on is that we're gonna have people coming from the thump since only 25% the estimate-
Point of information.
-of communities are going to opt in.
What's your, what's your point, Councilwoman?
Do she realize we gonna limit the number to 20? And when she talking about limiting the other number, the number of them has nothing to do with the feet per se.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I went on talking after I had asked a question, so, Mr. Erickson?
Yes, this is actually a concern, uh, question that, uh, Councilwoman Galloway had asked previously, and, uh, I, it was amongst a number of issues in last week's memo, uh, but tucked in there was, at least as of fiscal years 2016, 2017, per Lara, not necessarily in the city, but in Genesee County, there are 14,802 medical marijuana cardholders. And then there's Oakland County, of course, has, uh, significantly more. I think they have like 20,000, and then there's 4,000 in Saginaw and 2,000 in the other two bordering counties. Forgive me if I'm mixing up the remaining three, but it's four and two ballpark. But in Genesee County, um, it was 14,802. That information is a little old. It's the most recent I could get on relatively short notice, and of course, the open question is, are there gonna be more cardholders? People, are more people gonna sign up under the MMFLA? We, well, it's kind of a wait and see.
And, Mr. President-
Councilman?
You know, and I'm not trying to really convince Ms. Fields because I just want to talk to the public. She was concerned about the 500 feet creating more. The cap of 20 handles that. We got a cap of 20. The 500 feet ain't got nothing to do with how many. We could put that cap at 10. This is the amendment time. We could put the cap at 13. It's 13 or 12 been grandfather clause then, so I don't want to see us as legislatures mix apples and oranges and confuse the public. That 500-feet distance has, in my mind, nothing to do with the cap on provisional centers. You could, you've even discussed Ms. Fields putting a cap on grows since we've been sitting here. So, I don't want to see us mix apples and oranges and confuse the public, and I'll wait to see what you do as you talked earlier about a cap on growth, because I'm not gonna allow alcohol to be compared to medicine, medical marijuana. That's a bad analogy. Kids can go in a liquor store, kids can go in a, um-
Corner store?
Drugstore. If you want to put an, in the ordinance that nobody under 18 can enter this facility, this is the time to make these amendments. But I'm not gonna allow stuff just to be throughout there as it relates to the numbers and kids and all of that confusion. This is one separate aspect of an ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And, and before we vote, just a couple of things, uh, and I need you to help us with this, uh, Attorney Erickson. Now, when we are talking about reducing, let me get my glasses, reducing this, uh, 1,000 to 5,000 from a church and a park, I think so that we won't, that, that there won't get, there won't be any bad information getting saturated in the community. Let's take, uh, for instance, the concern that the neighborhood residents in the Seventh Ward had, legitimate concern. I don't want a dispensary. I don't want you to change my neighborhood into a place where there is a dispensary. That is a community. So, how would this or, this, uh, change affect that? I, I can't see how it would because a thousand feet is a thousand feet, and, and if it's, if there is a dispensary in a neighborhood that, that's a thousand feet, it's there. And I don't think, I think the sentiment that I got from the Seventh Ward residents is that I do not want a dispensary in my neighborhood. I don't care how many feet it, it, it is from me. So, how would reducing this 500 to 500 would affect a neighborhood like-
Point of information?
Yes.
President Winfrey, you do understand that a D5 and a D6 is a different commercial zone than a D2, D3 neighborhood?
Yes, sir, and that's exactly my point, is I want to make sure that that's there so that bad information or false information won't get saturated.
Yes, Mr. Council President, that's exactly right, uh, and the current ordinance restricts the provisioning centers to D5 and D6 as well as EF and G, but another, I think, very important provision meant to balance those interests that's currently in here is the 300-foot residential ban, uh, and of course, uh, an applicant who is within those 300 feet could apply for a variance in the instance that it would be appropriate, but we thought it, in order to prevent, because, um, in years, a few years ago, they did try to put a, under the old ordinance, a dispensary in that family video, and the response that this council has seen was pretty similar to the response then, and in order to prevent repeat issues, that's why we proposed a 300-foot residential ban, um, and then if, if the neighborhood, um, for whatever reason, say you have the Flint River dividing this proposed site and the 300-feet-away residential, then you have a, a variance for those exceptions, but the default is keeping him out of the neighborhoods to prevent reactions like that.
And, and then my concern, Councilman, and, and my other colleagues as well, is I just didn't want folks saying, okay, now, you know, the council voted to reduce those, those, those feet. Now, they can put a, a, a dispensary in our community, because I think as it relates to, uh, the Seventh Ward and the residents over in the Collat Cultural Center, I think that, what is that zone? D2?
D2 or D3.
I think, I think, but I just, I just wanted to get that, that information out there, so. Any other discussion? Madam clerk roll call.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. DeGara?
No.
Ms. Fields?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
The vote is, uh, five yes, two no.
Okay. What is this, uh, council's pleasure on 1-801-53?
Mr. President?
Councilman Mays?
I would yield to Mr. DeGara, Ms. Fields, or somebody, if they don't do the medical exemption, then I'll ask back for the floor. I just don't want to, you know, uh, if, if don't nobody want to make the motion, I'm with, but I, you-
Well, I got a different one, medical first.
Okay, you can, whatever. I'm just, I mean, I got a couple more, but I don't want to just, you know, I'm, I'm sharing, 'cause I'm caring.
You want me to go first? Sure. All right.
Oh. Let me, let me go back. Let me go back. Because, uh, DeVito is thinking that we were making all the amendments on the point one, so maybe I'm moving a little bit too fast here. Is that, is that my colleague's position on this?
Um, I'm thinking whatever is best for the record keeper. I'm thinking once we vote the amendments, then, um, however they feel we need to do them, I don't know if the whole ordinance will be a point one or however it's done technically, but, um, if we need be, we can do all things necessary to make it work.
Okay.
Mr. President?
President?
Please.
Uh, I, I think, you know, we'll vote on it, I think, the way you're presenting it-
Okay.
-in terms of subject matter, okay?
Okay.
And in that regard, I think we'll have to defer to the legal department then to go in and, into the proper ordinance to make the amendments.
All right.
Of me, would you-
Yes, that's fine. I'm, I'm tracking these amendments. I don't anticipate a problem.
And if you need, after we finish the amendments, or all things necessary motion, um, can do that at the end of the amend, proposed amendments, or voted on amendments.
Okay. So, for good record-keeping, so where are you saying that we are now then?
Um, we still on the point one.
Okay.
The numbers you made for point one, like earlier, we ended up having to change to the two and three.
Ah, gotcha, gotcha.
But then he'll be doing that a lot part.
Let me ask one last question. So, if we do it as a point one or however we do it, will we still be able to, at the end, move for adoption and first reading, or, I mean, first reading tonight, or we will have to hesitate?
So, it's all set, now, the idea would be to have a, a 51.2, and possibly a 52.1 and a 53.1.
Okay.
And ideally, we would want you to move those to a regular meeting for first reading.
Not the first reading tonight.
That regular meeting, you would then make your motion.
So, you don't see no way to do first reading?
Okay, the, the only way we can do that now is, as I indicated with what Reed and I discussed, is when we enter this, it will be by subject matter.
Okay.
We'll give it to him, and then he will go into the proper ordinance and make the amendment, so that with the three ordinances that we have, each one of them will become a different point number.
Right.
You see what I'm saying?
Right.
Because you're, you're all kind of all over the place, which is okay.
So, so, once we finish, through you, Mr. President, and Ms. Brown, once we finish-
No, no, not tonight.
Let's, once we finish, then we'll see, 'cause it don't sound like they want to do-
We can't do first reading tonight.
Move in first read with the amendments.
Okay.
I don't mean right now, but, uh, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman?
Um, I just want to make sure that we go through the ordinance, ordinances, the amendments that are listed before we start introducing new ordinances that haven't been proposed yet.
Okay.
What is she talking about?
So, we're still-
Mr. President?
Okay, but is it in here?
Councilman Griggs?
Are we on 1-801-53 or not? We're still at 1-801-51.1? 1-52.1? 53? Oh, go ahead, gosh. I'm gonna have to leave pretty soon.
Go ahead.
So, we really doing all three? If you make a specific amendment, but specifically, you have to be on a specific page, then we do that as well, but if it was broader, so it could affect all, because they're all related.
So, can I make a motion that we, uh, that we accept what Mr. Mays is suggesting?
We already did.
You seconded it.
I'll second it. Yes, you did. I'll say it.
Okay. So, we're onto the next issue.
Yes. Councilman DeGara?
All right, so, uh, I would like to make an amendment to wherever necessary for Reed to get us into, um, underneath the ordinance proposed in front of you, um, if you go to the last, the last page, there's section R. I would like to add a new section called S. Uh, this proposed amendment, it attacks abatement, prohibition, exemption, so condition of licensure pro, prohibition of local tax subsidies and abatements. No medical marijuana facility license shall be granted to an applicant who is also receiving any form of local tax subsidy or abatement for the location of the proposed medical marijuana facility without an exemption by way of resolution by the city council and mayor.
Point of information? He has totally confused me.
You know what?
I, I thought we were still on 1-801-51.1, and he's referenced us to the last page of the ordinance?
Right, well, under R, page 49, after, after page, uh, 49, it's, it's R, this would be a new section to be added to the actual ordinance, so. So, it's part of the, it's not in the ordinance yet, but it's a new section. Uh, legal can help answer that question, how that's possible.
Point of information? Have we just agreed to go through what's on the agenda first and then add new ones?
No, that was a suggestion. We didn't agree to it, but, but I don't think it's a bad idea, uh, so that we all can get on one track, but then I think, uh, the city clerk made a, a point that all of them relate.
Point of order?
What's your point, Council?
Was that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
What he did, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, what's the order?
Well, the order is that it needs support.
Gotcha, gotcha. All right. So, is there any-
Is there any support for that motion?
No.
Would you, it's been requested that you repeat the motion.
Yeah, I'll pass it around for a week's length.
Oh, come on. Mr. President, is this showboating, or what is this?
Mr. Griggs, we're trying to get out of here as quick as we can, and anything that is, uh, contrary to that is, will slow us down.
No, we didn't get a second, we didn't get a second to the word.
Yeah, if you want to-
Would you, would you, would you help us out here? Would you, would you, would you help us out here? Go ahead.
So, very briefly, council members, this would be a new subsection, subsection S, that clarifies, and for some background, the, the general purpose of opting in is not-
Point of order.
Yes, Councilman?
If he want to withdraw his motion, then we hear from him, but I think it's an unfair discussion, if the motion died for a lack of a second, but if we gonna do that in order, I ain't gonna never let it be discussion and selling or denying in the middle of a motion.
You're absolutely right, Councilman.
You know, I can't go that-
Councilman, your point is made, this motion, either it needs to be seconded, or it dies for a lack of second.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, thank you, Councilman Mays, now we're into the discussion phase. Attorney Erickson?
Thank you, Mr. Council President, and you are correct, Councilman Mays, I'm a little embarrassed I didn't catch that myself, but nonetheless, so basically, the rationale for here is to allow flexibility, but nonetheless, support the revenue generating approach that opting in is partially intended for, of course, a lot of discussion has been allowed, has been around patient access, and this isn't meant to take away from that, but the idea being, especially with provisioning centers, where you're talking about a limited number of licenses, we, the intention of this subsection is to say, as a condition of having a marijuana license, you cannot, without an exemption being made for your special circumstances by way of resolution, be getting a tax-free status by way of a subsidy or a, or an abatement for your property, because the purpose of subsidies and abatements are to encourage economic development, and we think that the, the marijuana opting in ordinance also completes that goal, so we don't need to burn it at both ends to incentivize investment, however, there may be the rare circumstance, because sometimes you have these tax abatements, and they're approved at the state level, and may be very difficult, if impossible, to get away from, in which case then that applicant would present his or her case to this body, and for a resolution, making an exemption to that otherwise ban on double dipping, so to speak.
Mr. President.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, most tax abatements are requests for tax abatements and stuff come before this council, even obsolete districts and stuff come before this council, and we have the opportunity at that point to turn them up or down, you might have a situation where somebody under this ordinance is already in a district, and so that could create a problem. If you got somebody already in a district, and then they get state approval, and then I've got to deny them because they've got some tax abatement, or if they come in here with a $50 million investment, I mean, they say they want to cater to the big shots, so I don't know if I can support this at this time, I have not researched it, I have not had enough discussion on it, and, you know, I don't want to single these businesses out just because they are a particular business, we have used this as a tool, and I'm not going to treat these businesses any different from another business, I don't want to go carte blanche no on them, and I'm looking at a facility down here, that very well might already have a tax exempt status on South Saginaw, and I'm concerned about that, the doctor then spoke, and we then did a medical exemption, I can't vote for this at this time.
Mr. President, I agree with, I agree with Mr. Mays, I can't vote on this, I don't know if this is a zoning board of appeals item, I don't know if I need to be talking to Mr. Newsom on this, I'm not, I'm not supporting this at all, thank you.
Mr. President?
Any other discussion, Councilman, Councilwoman Fields?
Yes, I might well support this, but I'll tell you, it just points out that even though the plan is to finish amendments today, and hopefully have the first reading at the next regular council meeting, there are some additional questions and information about this proposed ordinance, and I think there will be the one that I'm going to propose, which is an amendment which allows for a cap on both grow and processing facilities, so I don't really know how to handle this, but I think we will, might not be ready for a first reading on Monday, so that one, I wanted to comment, and the other thing, indulge me for just one quick minute, I just found this very interesting, getting that number of how many card-carrying, you know, medical marijuana users there are in the city, because basically, we've got about 30,000 households that have water accounts in the city, that we're having trouble collecting, our collection rate is very low.
That was the-
So I, I just thought it was interesting that basically, half that number-
What's your point, women? We're not going to-
Point of information.
You can't go with that.
Do she realize that was not the city, that was a county?
It was a county, right.
Was that county or city?
Yes, it was county.
Oh, no, I thought it was city.
No, it's county.
County. Okay, any other discussion on this motion? Then let, let me, since, since we have some ambiguity regarding this, instead of making a substitute motion, which I can't make, just, would the maker of the motion, Councilman Garrett, be willing to-
Table it for-
Table it?
Yes.
Until there's more information, or till the councilmen, councilpersons can get more information, and then move forward, I don't think that they're against it, but it's just that there is a lack of information, and there may be some more details that's needed.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say table till Monday?
Is that, is that, is that the mo, is that, is that in the form of a motion? It sounds like you're, you're asking me.
Well, she made a motion, so.
I made a motion to table this, item until Monday.
There's a motion on the floor to table it until Monday, is there support for that motion?
I'll second it.
To the next meeting.
There is no meeting Monday, so now you're talking about, so there is committee?
Uh.
Point of information.
Councilman Mays?
Do, are we planning a special meeting for Monday?
Not that I know of.
That ain't the one.
We haven't announced it yet.
Okay, let, let me amend that motion then, okay?
Okay.
I make a motion to table this until the next committee meeting, and, and I believe legislative is the correct committee?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second, it's been, and properly seconded, thank you, Mr. Griggs, is there any discussion on the, on the, on the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, zero no, to table to legislative committee.
Okay. Moving right along.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Mays?
I would move that we put into the ordinance the medical exemption, as we had a exemption type language passed out, before I make the motion, let me pull back and start over. Through you to Mr. Reed Erickson, this proposed amendment, medical research facility definition, medical research, it's got number 27, medical research facility, where did it derive from? Did you have any input in this?
I, I did draft this, Councilman, with some, at the request of Councilwoman Worthing, she had some proposed language and asked me to take a crack at it.
Okay, and so I would move that we do a proposed amendment such as this one, and actually, this amendment, it's only one change that I'm looking at, Attorney Reed, under the section 27, it says the applicant is a Michigan licensed physician, I want that to be a valid Michigan licensed physician versus a suspended Michigan licensed physician, so I want that clarification in there, that it must be a valid Michigan licensed physician or, you know, partnership entity versus suspended, I don't want people with suspended license taking a shot at this, and then I'll continue to look at any further amendments, but I would move this proposed amendment with that change for approval.
That's your motion, Councilman?
Yes.
Is there support for the motion?
Support.
Could you restate the motion?
The clerk is asking to restate the motion, Councilman Mays.
Um, we had a proposed amendment for medical doctors and medical research, so I moved this proposed amendment for approval with one change, that it says a valid physician, Michigan physician's license versus a suspended license.
Is that Madam Clerk?
Could you tell me what paragraph that's located in?
Yeah, that would be in the first paragraph, where it says, the applicant is a Michigan licensed physician, prior to the word Michigan, it would be something to clarify valid versus suspended.
I see, okay.
Okay. And there is some support for that motion, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, we've lost a member, Ms. Worthing ain't here, I don't want her stuff to fail, so I would move to table this proposed amendment at this time.
Okay, it's been moved-
I would move to table it till later on in the meeting, or I'll see when I do it again, Mr. Griggs is gone, that affects something.
Is that support, is there support for that motion?
Yes, support.
So it's been moved and supported?
Table to legislative.
I understand, later on in this meeting, before the meeting is adjourned, I'll figure out what to do with it.
I understand that, that's still his motion, and then, is, is Santino is-
Yeah, because we done lost a member, then we were moving pretty good.
All right. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey-Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no, to table.
Mr. President.
Councilman Mays?
I'm concerned with the ability to continue with the work of amendments, and I've got a flavor of what passes and what fails, I really wanted to get this work done today, but we've got members that's absent, and that concerns me on this legislative process, so, you know, I've seen meetings that's been recessed, I know we got language in the council rules on how we can recess and adjourn, through you to Mr. Garrett, Mr. Garrett, have you looked at the medical research facility proposed amendment?
I've looked at it today, today was my first time seeing the amendment.
Uh, you ready to vote, or you need more time?
I think if we're going to table the one that, we already tabled that with my amendment, we'd like to table that one, too, tonight.
And that's what we did, and so we've now lost a certain group of folk, and so what I'm gonna do, Mr. President, I'm, I'm about to make a motion to adjourn, but I don't want to do it and slight my colleagues, I'm a stickler for doing that, and not doing that when others do it with me, I really want to get this important work done, I think we made some key amendments, I know there was discussions about the merit base, so let's take a stab at the merit base, the merit base approach versus the first come, first served, this ordinance has the first come, first served, we've already approved, and it, we did the amendment on the merit base, so the merit base aspect, I think we wanted to further amend that to allow council to have input, and so, you talked about, what is it, rubic, oh, how did you say that?
Rubric.
Say that again.
Rubric.
I don't know.
A, a rubric or a scorecard?
Yeah, a scorecard, but what, what is y'all calling it?
Rubric, R-U-B-R-I-C.
Rubric.
R-U-B, R-I-
I-C.
I-C.
Yeah.
Rubric.
Rubric.
So rubric is the scorecard.
Yeah.
Why didn't y'all just say scorecard? Why you didn't say rubric? But anyway, the rubric, so when I say rubric-
Scorecard, Councilman.
And it was language in there about the, once the staff do that, and it go to certain folks, I want language in there that help, that allows us, I think you got the clerk in there as one of the staff persons, or you don't? You don't?
Mm-mm.
Okay, so the clerk ain't in there, and the council ain't in there as it relates to this scoring system, you got the police, what you got, planning, let's look at that, direct me to that page.
The amendment is on pages eight to 10, Councilman, let me turn there, and I can tell you specifically-
Page eight.
Through 10.
Through 10, okay, and I'm looking specifically for those that's involved in the rubric.
Yes, so then-
C.
C.
On page nine, bottom left.
The scoring panel consists of desert knees of a head illegal, planning and zoning, police, fire, building inspection, safety, shell score, I would want to see the council president or the council's desert knee in that mix, if you can have a desert knee from legal, planning, and zoning, now those are staff people, I wouldn't care if you had a planning commissioner desert knee as well, but I'm thinking, I might want to see a desert knee, give me your argument why we shouldn't have no desert knees from these type of bodies, and if you, you sell me, I'll say, okay.
Councilman, so far, I've sold you very little, so, but I'll do my best, specifically, our intention with staff is to avoid open meeting act questions, which then could lead to slowing down this process, which is already going to be a large process when it comes to review.
Can I interrupt you there?
Yes, you can.
If you got one desert knee from the council and/or planning commission, you ain't in jeopardy of open meeting violations, but proceed.
Well, we're trying to do the evaluation without creating a board, or a body similar to this body, or the planning commission, under this ordinance, and a broad reading of the open meetings act could read a body created by ordinance now being subject to the open meetings act requirements, so quite specifically, we're trying to balance the intention of this body to do a merit-based review, do it thoroughly, and by way of presentation of the scoring criteria to this body, make sure that the council is still intimately involved in the factors that are important to the review, but avoiding the open meeting act issues, and also avoiding slowing the process down, and as was raised earlier, the potential for political arguments.
So let me ask this question, why ain't the clerk's office on there, have you got licensing, or anybody from the clerk's office on there?
No, but that, I'm not in opposition to that.
You ain't in opposition to that?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm gonna be in favor of somebody from the clerk's and/or licensing, or the clerk's desert knee, so that's one, but now keep in mind, I'm kind of going with your legal interpretation, as it relates to not creating a board or a body, as it relates to the open meetings act, because certain multi-member bodies fall, would you say, up under the open meetings act, would that be a fair statement?
Yes, it would, Councilman.
So, you saying that these folks communicating wouldn't be up under that in your opinion?
Correct, we're quite explicitly not creating such a body.
So let's go a step further, then let's look at the rubric, the final product, would that be a right way to say it?
Yes, it would.
So now we got the final rubric, it's coming to who?
To this council for approval in an open meeting.
It's coming to the council for approval in an open meeting, and that's where the council would have input.
That's correct.
And we can scrutinize that final rubric to the cows come home. And we can scrutinize that final rubric to the cows come home.
We specifically encourage that.
Now let me ask this question, the criteria for the scoring, the way this ordinance is wrote right now, we would have input on the criteria as it relates to the rubric?
Yes.
And how soon would that come to us if we pass and adopt this ordinance? What would you anticipate? That would be the first step, that, where is the language that says that criteria would come to us? Do you know where to find that at?
Oh, yes, um, factors for scoring, uh, and shall provide the final rubric for approval by a majority of the city council, and that's , uh, on the column on, on the right of page nine, maybe a third of the way up.
Yeah, it say, and shall provide the final rubric for approval by the majority of the council, that's the final rubric. The scoring criteria should include factors such as, so let me, the scoring criteria, that's the one that I want input on before you start scoring and getting me a final rubric.
Yes, and in fact, what this is just meant to be is a, here are things that are guaranteed to be presented to the council, and, but that's meant to be a floor and not a ceiling, so must have these factors, and we can add additional factors as well. And if we've gotten anything wrong in these factors, obviously, uh, this body can amend that.
So, so what I'm trying to do, do we need to make an amendment now in this ordinance? Or before we finalize this ordinance, we need to make sure that we done talked about the scoring criteria? Because if I settle with those desert needs and heads illegal and all of these people, then I think I would wanna, um, look closely at that scoring criteria or I might lose my opportunity.
Forgive me, Councilman, what's, what's the, the question, uh?
I don't wanna lose my opportunity on input on the scoring criteria.
Oh, absolutely.
And I don't see where, if I don't amend and change this ordinance specifically, given the council input, then I think that the only criteria would be local hiring for staff sub, or, and/or subcontractors, the size of the proposed facility, the total capital investment, whether the applicant has a history of prior building code violations, and whether the applicant has already received preapproval for the state, from the state. I don't think that, um, you got criteria in there, like, um, I might wanna see, um, whether not, not only local hiring, are they local applicants and for out of state? You know, I wanna work on that criteria more without losing it yet, so I, I mean, can I word it?
Yes, Count, the, the intention of the final approval before the council for the, the scorecard was for that very conversation, that, that was why we included it to say for approval by the council.
Okay, so that mean you saying that if y'all give me a scorecard, a rubric, and y'all done spent all that staff time, and I say, but you didn't consider whether they from Flint or whether they from Detroit, you gonna allow me to put that in then and give them more points? I don't see that happening.
Well, Councilman, that's the legislative process, and we're trying to adhere to it and, and respect the, the legislature's role in, in crafting the criteria under the ordinance.
Okay, so let me do it this way, if this, if this ordinance says, and shall provide the final rubric for approval by the majority of the city council, do we need to put language in there? Um, it ain't just approval, we can actually add to or change the final rubric before we approve it with what you telling me?
Would modification and approval?
Okay. Whatever you come up with, that's my concern.
It's a good word, that's better.
However you wanna come up with it, if you wanna go with that, I'll make the amendment now, and, um, so, Mr. President, I would move that on page nine. Subsection D, that, where it says, and shall provide the final rubric for approval by the majority of city council, that that would read, and shall provide the final rubric for modification and/or approval by a majority of the city council.
Okay, that's the motion, is there a second for that motion?
Support.
Councilman, Councilwoman Fields, it's, thank you for the support, uh, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing non, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
The vote is, um, six yes, zero no.
No, 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 let's go, go ahead, uh, Councilwoman Fields.
Well, since we're apparently not going the way we said we would go, I was going to make a motion, I would like to see two additional amendments, but I would like, not quite sure how to do this, because I would like to see them prepared by the city attorney and brought to the next committee meeting.
Okay.
Um, what would the best way be to do that?
Mr. President?
Councilman Mays?
I would ask that it might be pretty good, Ms. Fields, if you discuss them and if we hear them and see that you got support, we'll kinda figure out how to do it, what, take them one at a time is what I would do.
Now, before we do that, now you, Councilman Mays, you had mentioned the inclusion of at least one other department into?
Oh, yeah.
You, now how do you, you just gonna leave it out there?
So let's, can, if she would allow, let's go back and stick the clerk in there and/or her desert need and then?
And then we'll come back to?
We can come right back.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Councilman Mays?
I would move an additional amendment on the scoring panel to include the clerk and/or the clerk's desert need in subsection C, the scoring panel.
Is there support for that motion? Is there a second for that? It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing non, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Okay, this is on the modification to?
Include the clerk in the scoring.
Okay.
That's on, uh, page nine.
Right, okay.
Section C.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay, alright, Mr., Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms., uh? Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no.
Okay, Councilwoman Fields?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to have an amendment to this ordinance that places a cap on both the number of grow and processing centers, um, that number to be recommended by city staff at our next committee.
Being specific there, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay, is there, is there any support for that motion? Councilman Guerra, thank you, uh, any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Mays?
If I heard her motion right, her motion was that the staff should make a recommendation on the, um, number of grows, but I heard that as an amendment. I wouldn't really do that as an amendment, I would ask them to make a recommendation, and then when they make the recommendation, then propose it as a amendment, because the amendment would be in the ordinance. And so if you make a motion that they make a recommendation, an amendment that they make, you know, so I think we got the drift, so I'll be quiet, I would suggest, you know, we can do it in the form of a motion, but not as an amendment, you know?
I'm willing to withdraw that motion and make a different motion.
Okay, and that motion is, Councilwoman?
I guess the motion is to have the city legal and zoning make a recommendation to council at the next meeting for, uh, a cap on both growing centers and processing centers in the city of Flint to be licensed.
Okay, is there support for that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, is there any discussion? Councilman Guerra?
Just for clarification, that's kind of making a motion to have a discussion item from, in a way, at a committee meeting, so we're not necessarily agreeing to vote on any, just to talk about it, clarification?
Well, no, because we never get to discussion items. So, um...
Mr. President?
What is the easiest way then to make sure this gets on committee, that we're dealing with this next committee?
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, Mr. President, I think that motion is fine, we'll see what their recommendation is, and we'll decide then whether we accept it, change it, or amend it, but I'll be supporting that motion, and I'll see what they come up with, I'll see if they come up with ten, twenty, thirty, fifty, or two hundred.
Okay.
Once I see what they come up with, that'll give me a radar on whether I wanna put a cap on it or what I think, so I'll support the motion, and, um, you know, we'll take it from there, because if we do that, then it's gonna be some merit base that go along with that. I'm already knowing that I want merit base on security and transport as well as provision in centers, what am I missing? Security, transport, processing, provision in centers, and why not grow? So if we do put a cap on the grow, because right now we got a cap on security and transportation and provision in centers, the only two left open that ain't gonna have a merit base is grow and processing. So, um, you know, I'm not gonna mess with this motion, I'm gonna support it, but, um, Reed, you might wanna bring back a recommendation on processing as well, because, um, that would be the only left one open. If these get caps on it, I'm gonna put, um, okay, I'm gonna be trying to put bo, all of them in the merit-based rubric system.
Okay.
I learned something today, so, you know, that's gonna be the next amendment, anything with a cap gonna be merit based.
What's your point, Council?
Um, I just wanna make sure on the agenda, we don't get lost in discussion items, so I don't wanna make it a special order, just this one item, but under the discussion under legislative?
Yeah, but then?
When we're talking about all the amendments, I wanna make sure that this is included.
Then this new, this new discussion item will go probably to the front of the list, instead, that's, that's the way I understood it to be.
And, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
The intent, the, the intent of this motion that I'll be supporting is not to order y'all to come back with nothing, but we requesting, we asking, because under the charter, that's all we can do is ask, we asking, we asking, and if you do it, you do, if you don't, it ain't no penalty, 'cause we don't order y'all, we politely requesting ask. And so I'll be supporting this asking motion.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing non, Madam Clerk, roll call.
This is on legal and zoning.
Right, this is a cap on the?
Do an recommendation on the cap, okay. Uh, Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no.
Okay, Councilwoman?
Winfrey. Um, okay, my second one is I would like, um, to make a motion to amend under the security section, I've already forgotten what page it is, that it is requirement that all growing processing and provisioning centers have staffed 24 hours a day a minimum of one security personnel at their own expense.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and properly seconded, discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Mays?
Now, I might not vote on this one, because if I got a business and I got insurance, I don't know if I can hire a security person there 24 hours a day. I don't know if Rite Aid do it, I don't know what businesses do it, but I know this business, um, might think folks will break in, and they might. Now, I might look at it in that rubric and give them some points if they say they gonna do that, but I don't know if I'll put it in the ordinance, I might look at it as something I might give them points for, and so I, I don't know if I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for this one. Um, I understand security concerns, now if you want me to learn more about it, Ms. Fields, and I, I would go for a table with the other ones, but right now my thought is, I, I, I gotta do a little research on that.
Mr. President, I'm amenable to tabling this to the next committee for discussion.
Okay.
Second.
She, is that in the form of a, of a motion there?
I don't think I could make a substitute motion, my own motion, somebody else.
Well, you can move the table.
You can move to table it.
Alright, then I move to table this to the next legislative committee.
Thank you, and to the next legislative committee?
Correct.
And then it was supported by Councilman Guerra? Okay, is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I wouldn't want it to go down, it's something that we can look at, it's something I've talked to some of the folks about, they might have security, it might, can get them some more points as we deal with this scoring system. Um, I wish, as we talked, I wish they could hire Flint police, just like some of these other places did, versus security, and we got another police on the street, that might get them some points, but whatever they do, that security is a good concern, and I don't wanna vote no until I talk about it some more, and it's some, it's an, it's, it's Ms. Fields', um, proposed amendment, so rather than me vote no, I will be voting to table it, so I can research and talk some more.
Okay, any other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no.
Mr. President?
Councilman Mays?
In line with what Ms. Fields is saying, I'm not gonna put it in the form of a motion, no language in the ordinance, but it's in the same line. You know, Flint got that camera stuff, and I don't know if it's in there, but that camera equipment? The chief NIM say they can look at stuff, is that in the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes, it is, Councilman.
Okay, so they gonna have to have that camera equipment where the police department can be looking at their stuff, right? That's in the ordinance?
Yes, Councilman.
Okay, I thought I had?
Mr. Mays, it's on page 15 of the document.
Okay, and then this one gentleman mentioned something about outside grow versus a facility, is this all inside grow type stuff, is we able to legislate this? I mean, I know it can be according to some state, it can be industrial or agriculture, but we don't have agricultural zoning, or do we? Um, so you telling me all this green space, we can rezone stuff agricultural, can't we? Have we got any agricultural zoning in Flint, or do I have to propose some agricultural zoning in the city of, the great city of Flint, top to?
Yeah, Councilman, as, as you well know, um, the city does not have any agricultural zone land, um, it is this body's ultimately decision if they'd like to create a new zoning district, um, and you know how difficult those conversations have been the last few years.
So Kevin, I might look at some agricultural land, if you bring me some, if y'all wanna propose some agricultural land, I mean, I don't know if it'll, if, if we can grow stuff at Buick City or at AC where they used to be, um, I don't know in my area, I mean, green space, agricultural, that's a fine line, so you bring me, if you choose, if you have time, I know we strapped for, um, help in certain departments.
We most definitely are.
We even strapped up here in the council, look how strapped we is.
Yeah.
But the point is this, if you bring me some agriculture... But the point is this, if you bring me some agricultural, I don't know if it'd be ready for this adoption, but I'm telling you, I'll take a serious look at it, not just for this, but overall. The stuff that y'all calling green space, you wouldn't call agricultural, would you?
We would not, no. I mean, we don't call anything green space. We call it green neighborhood, green innovation, or open space, which are public parks.
So what if I wanted to call it green space, open space, slash agriculture? I'm a legislator, I could do that?
So it's, it's a good question, and, and when we first came to you with the total revision that the city's been working on since 2014 of the zoning code, we actually would permit it in the Commerce and Employment and Production Center and Green Innovation Two, which many of those sites are former industrial sites, but the intent is to get a green centric use, not a traditional industry. So within those three districts of the proposed code, um, but that's not what we're following by law.
Well, I would say this through you, um, Kevin, to Mr. Keeler and everybody else, you ain't gotta worry about me allowing agricultural zoning in the neighborhoods. It might be agricultural zoning, um, in a, in a different area. So as I explore this, don't get nervous, that Councilman Mays exploring Mr. Keeler, the seventh one, and all the people, it would be a very agricultural space and a similar to what they, I think my point would be made. So we'll see if we ever get any agricultural space in the, um, city of Flint. Now, our zoning, one last thing, Kevin, if I may, our zoning ordinance without agricultural zoning do allow us to grow tomatoes and greens and watermelons?
In certain districts, correct, yes.
In certain districts?
Correct.
Which ones?
Uh, depends on the use and how it's done.
So we ain't gonna go out there and be messing up nobody's gardens this summer, is we?
If you take their land, you might be, but, uh...
Well, I don't want that to happen. Boy, we might have to really get into that and fix it and give an exemption. And so, all right, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Um, Mr. President.
Yes, yes, sir.
Um, I really wanted to try to move these amendments for first read, but I'm hearing from the clerk, I'm hearing from legal, I'm hearing from staff, and I want to check one last time. Is there any way I can word the amendments that's been passed? Because now if we do more, it's gonna have to come back from first read. When is the next time this council can meet? We almost done. When is the next time, I mean, through you to Mr., um, Erickson, but I've seen Ms. Donahue, so I would yield to Ms. Donahue, but I'm still, I mean, I'm, I'm ready to get this over with.
Oh.
I'll just make a suggestion that you move it to committees, and then pass your amendments to committees, and then move it to council on the 23rd.
Have we got a committee meeting this Wednesday?
No, next, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
And then if you have it on the 23rd, first reading, because the way the calendar falls, we can publish in time, pass on for secondary, the first meeting in May.
So we'd be ready for second read and adoption the first meeting in May?
Otherwise, the calendar doesn't allow.
Not adoption. Not adoption.
Not, well, after publication, and we can do some immediate effect stuff maybe?
Yes, but on, on this kind of ordinance, it has to go through a 15-day period.
Okay.
And we do have a deadline that Reed, I think, should speak to as it relates to the state.
That's what I want to hear.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like I touched on when, when we began this, this hearing, we're looking at June 15th, so we would like to have, at a minimum, two weeks, end of May, beginning of June, before that deadline, so that the currently operating temporary provisioning centers have the opportunity to at least plead their case to the state of Michigan. Now, uh, at this point, I don't know if the state will have ruled on those applications by the 15th, um, but at, we're, we're gonna do the best we can to get them timely before them, and, um, having it this Wednesday, and then for reading at the next coming Monday, is in line with the schedule that we would be operating under if all the amendments were made tonight regardless. So we're not necessarily at least losing anything, as long as the subsequent amendments on Wednesday are the final ones.
So can somebody help me with the amendment that I tabled to later on in the meeting? What amendment was that?
That was the medical research facility exemption.
Okay, the medical research facility exemption. And so if I count the number of people here, it would be too risky to get a no, because it seemed like it's moving pretty good. Mr. Griggs left, Eva Worthing, who is introducing that, ain't here. So I don't want to vote on it right now, because I don't know what Mr. Santino Guerrero will do. He said he want more time. So it's a little risky. I think I've done all that we could do here today, in my legislative opinion, Mr. Erickson, and to Cory and Kevin, and all those who took their time, I really apologize, because I'm like a workaholic. I'd go like a ever-ready, what was that, Energizer Bunny type guy? And so I just don't want to jeopardize good legislation. And so what I'm gonna do now is be quiet, and if I'm quiet and my colleagues ain't got nothing else, then, you know, I'm gonna let you go with the agenda. Um, but as far as me stalling and filibustering and looking at any other amendments, I'll do that later on my own time. I think we did some good work today, but I just want to get it done. Let me get one last clarification on timeframe. Am I hearing y'all say that if we send this to committee, we ain't gonna make the amendments till we get back out on the floor, right? We ain't making amendments in committee.
You would be working on the amendment.
We would work on them, but they'd actually be made out on the floor.
Well, you would move them to the floor.
We'd know what, we would know where we're headed.
So we could make them on the floor and do first read in the same day?
No.
So that's why I'm thinking...
Could we get together with you and talk privately?
Okay, we can do that, because if we need another special meeting prior to that, maybe we will.
Could I mention this, Mr. President? Okay. Having worked on some of these ordinances before, when the marijuana law was, was voted upon by the people of the state of Michigan back some years ago, my staff and I, along with law, the police department, and others, did research on all of this, and it took six to eight months to do the research, before we could actually finally write the first ordinance. And basically where I'm going with my point is this, while what we're putting together here may not be perfect, it still gives us something to operate under, with the understanding that later on, as we progress, we can go back in and make other amendments. Okay? So this is not the final thing, so to speak, but it gets us to where we want to go.
Yeah, and, 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 and I understand that, but I know it looked like we got that medical exemption. That's the one that I'm thinking we might can pass. Eva seemed to support it, and we might can pass it. And so I wish that we could have got that done tonight. We might have almost everything ready, except for one or two more. So I'm saying, with this council, now you know I usually am present, but I might come up missing in action, and then we don't have a quorum, so I'm nervous, Ms. Brown, because I don't know what this council will do. But I'm gonna go and have confidence, and I look forward to talking to you privately. And if we need a special meeting, I hope that this council will show up. We are close to getting this done. I thought we'd get it done today and be ready. I'm very kind of, um, interested in finishing this up. I'll just leave it like that. Um, how many amendments did we get done, you think, Reed?
I count three, councilman, but one of them was, had a number of, has, number, the first one had a couple factors to it.
I think it was three.
Yeah, three.
And you got somebody can give them to me, so I won't, before tomorrow, the next, we'll get them. I'll probably get a copy, Mrs. Brown got them. Um, Mr. President, I'm...
Councilman Mays?
I'm quiet for right now.
Okay. Well, you don't need to be quiet.
I thought I said Mr. Garrett. I thought you...
What's the council's pleasure? Councilman Garrett?
Oh, Mr. President. Point of information.
What's your point?
Is Mr. Garrett finna move to adjourn?
Yes.
I wonder if he would yield to me?
Yes.
Mr. President, before we move to adjourn, since when I said we would go through the rest of the agenda council discussion, what I wanted to bring up was the information about the motion that kind of upset me last week, or either earlier this week. I was up in Senator Ananik's office yesterday, I think it was. We do have $6 million in that reverse, because 6.1. And I want to make a referral, because I want to find out who authorized or dealt with that other 4 or 5 me. I mean, I'm asking for an accounting on that. I want to know if anybody from the city requested that it be spent for pipe replacement. The media is reporting pipe replacement, and somebody in Senator Ananik's office seemed to think it might have been pipe replacement. There's no way I thought we was using any of that money for pipe replacement. I thought pipe replacement was coming out of another pot of money. Now, if that money has been used for pipe replacement, I had conversation that we could ask that that money maybe be put back into the reserve fund. So if it has went to pipe replacement, for whatever reason, I'm gonna ask that that money be looked at as put back in the reserve fund, because I know AECom is doing an application for money. We spent, I thought contracted out with WT Stevenson, Goyet, and Blang NIM for a pipe replacement last summer. I thought that was a pot of $40 million different from that reserve fund. So when I talked to Senator Ananik NIM, and I'm thinking that we might be able to talk, all of us publicly shortly, we talked about whether that money can be put back in that reserve fund. But I just want everybody to know that I went out on the line saying that money was there. And had we used our money and kept them pipes open, I believe, whether we used any of it or all of it, just like I said, it would be put back. And so I've been watching that even before Mr. Newsom NIM was here. And so my position is this, I'm disappointed in the leadership of the city right now, as it relates to them pipes. Now, I'm getting calls of people got water coming in from Washington, churches getting involved, but still I think we got an opportunity to draw down from that reserve fund. And if we have to be the stopgap measure with our general fund, we should do it. I'm not gonna put dollars and cents over the possibility of kids, women, elderly, and children. Once we start shaking up that ground, everything I done learned over the water crisis, say they water be turned off and the ground move, and you can flush and do, but if that population received water, that would be fine. And then finally, I'll say this, people want Councilman Mays to say the water is fine. You ain't gonna hear me say it, because I'm not testing myself, and I done went through that. But what you will hear Councilman Mays saying, I hate to keep picking on you, Mr. Keeler, but I like you, we was both recording secretaries in the UAW. What I would say, Mr. Keeler, to the public, is you will hear Councilman Mays say, price what it takes to build a bottled water plant here in Flint that can bottle up and purify water. I wouldn't care if it costs 5 million, 10 million, we done did all that, we done spent all that type money. And so if you gonna keep getting water, I wouldn't care if you owned it, Mr. Keeler, Mr. Green, I'll admit you, but I'm for building entrepreneurship. And we got a now economic development team down there, we done built Auto World, Water Street Pavilion, the higher regency. You mean to tell me we can't build a bottled water factory, and it might be sitting right out there on Duane Highway? So I know we can do that. And so that's my job to provide that type of conversation. Now, I dare somebody to beat me to the punch, but I don't want to do like we did with the grocery store, the minute we talk about it, some big shop come in here and build it, and then folks that look like me or you, Mr. Garrett, or Flint folks, ain't got none of the pot. So I'm putting it out there, and then once you build it and it's producing good bottled water, which people trust, because they don't trust the water coming out of the faucet, then I'll go a step further about distributing it, because it can be distributed in more than one way, and the wealth can be spread it, but people laugh. They laugh for 10 years, 20 years, and he always told other council, he who laughs last, lasts best. Now, if you want to, Mr. Garrett, um, but my record is made, and it will continue to be made, and I'm gonna continue to fight for the people of the city of Flint. Thank you.
May I recognize? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
There's a motion on the floor to adjourn. Is there a second?
Mr. President, I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, if it was, and I voted no, you couldn't adjourn, ain't no discussion, ain't on no motion to adjourn.
And underwritten, in part by the Flint Pipe Fitters Union, looking for pipe fitters apprentices throughout Flint. With more information available, by calling 810-720-5243, or online at local370.com. Join us at WFOV for rebroadcast and simulcast of city council and other government meetings. 92.1 LP FM Flint.